Consistent, it never changes. Yes. Very, very consistent. They are now beginning to speak the language of IPOB, that is the only way I can put it. There is nothing contained in what TY Danjuma said or Pahai Adabanjo that we have not said on Radio Biafra before. The Jangja weed are coming in from the north, as I told you that they will come. They are strangling us economically, socially and culturally, as I told you they will. I also told you that if you serve the zoo, you will come back in shame. Is that not happening?
It's happening.
So even those who never believed before, now they believe in what we are doing. The message from Baltimore today to the whole world and those who are unfortunate to be in the zoo is this. That what IPOB is fighting for is for the betterment of everybody. Of everybody currently, or should I say presently. We must set those people free. For us to be completely free, we must set others free as well. And that is exactly what we are doing. And I'm glad to say that their senses are now coming back. They are now realizing that what those miscreants are saying, or have been saying for very many years, is reality after all. But you know them shame won't allow them to come out. I see IPOB as that rejected stone, isn't it? They said, "We can never be useful." And today, they are waiting for this broadcast, so they can learn something new. And you are the reason why I travel all over the world, very proud, determined in this area. Because sometimes I say to myself, "Why must we continue?" People who don't understand the divinity of this very message. Biafra restoration is spiritual. It's not temporal. That is something that we need to appreciate and understand. Biafra restoration is not a franchise.
Never, never.
I have nothing until Biafra comes, as I said to Elohim in the oath I took at the temple in Jerusalem. That I will have no earthly possessions. Until Biafra is restored. What we are doing here is not a business. Is not a franchise. What we are doing within IPOB is the calling of God himself. And that is why our enemies, regardless of the vast resources at their disposal, they are the ones who are panicking. We are not panicking. We know where we are going. Because the zoo must fall. I promised the Fulani that I will break Nigeria into pieces, it will no longer exist as an entity. It doesn't matter what they do. It's a proclamation that will come to pass, because anything I say behind this microphone comes to pass. I said everything. Even when I said I'll sacrifice my parents, I didn't know what I was saying. It has come to pass. That is the way it works with us. Those who are in the flesh will not understand what we are doing. They said you people are impossible to bring together. And within 24 hours, in a far-flung place from DC, this is the number of people who are here. That is confirmation that we not only love ourselves. That we are determined to restore Biafra. Absolutely determined. They used to say to us that these people cannot come together, nor contribute money, nor do anything that will benefit those they don't know. But you have proven them wrong. What you are doing today, no other group of people can do it in Africa, I say no one can do it.
Even in the whole world.
This is the largest mass movement on this earth. I said the largest. And the era of Fulani, emasculation of other people has come to an end. That when they go to sleep, they think of IPOB and they have convulsion. That was what we set out to achieve from day one. Did you see our men in nowhere at all? Can you imagine giving those men arms? We must preach this very gospel. Some people ask you, "What have you accomplished, what are you doing?" But, on my way here. They said that the Inspector General of Police, I'm reading from Guardian. Have now ordered the immediate removal of every illegal checkpoint. Because they understand, we are not criminals, we don't steal. We are not asking for anything that doesn't belong to us. What we are asking for is a right to establish Biafra. In way it was before the white man. That right is inevitable. That right is natural. Anybody not pursuing Biafra, I keep saying this all the time. You either have a mental problem. You either have a mental problem. Or you have a questionable bloodline. Because all of us, we are with, everybody here comes from an autonomous community, is that correct? Is there any community that is on autonomous that will come from? What is the meaning of autonomy? Why is it that you will argue for autonomous communities in your own villages when it comes to Biafra to be autonomous from the zoo? You say no. Does that make any sense to anybody? They said they have now removed the checkpoints, but you know how they behave in the zoo.
Very reliable to always.
Some people ask us, or they asked us the other time. I'm just trying to tell you some of the accomplishments we've been able to make since we started coming to Washington DC. We're not hiding, we're not hiding anything. Those who are working for us in the DC, if you go to your DOJ, you see their papers there. You see how much we are paying them. You see the work they are doing for us. Because we are not asking USA to do something that hasn't been done before. We are not criminals. We are not terrorists. Who are the terrorists in Nigeria? Who are the terrorists in Nigeria? They have four terrorist groups, four, four! They have four terrorist groups. All funded by the Fulani. They have Boko Haram. Islamic State of West Africa. They have Al Qaeda in the Maghreb. And they have these very deadly Fulani gunmen. Yes, ISIS is a ISIS one. They said they will not give the presidency to an Igbo man because of what the Nakana and IPOB are doing. That's what they said. Can you imagine if Biafran's were to produce four terror groups, what would happen to us? Those that are currently funding four terror groups are allowed to rule in perpetuity. And they have discovered something that I'm sure that most of you have known on alone. That should the Fulani man decide to rule the zoo for the next 100 years, they can do it and nothing will happen. You know why they will rule it for the next 100 years? They control INEC. No, they own, not control, they own INEC. They own EFCC. So when you start asking questions, they will go and lock you up. Or they see you as a threat, they lock you up. They own the National Assembly. When it precise them, they introduce hate speech being. They own the army. They own the navy. They own the police. They own customs. They own civil defense. Everything is under their control. And they understand, they understand very vividly. That the Eurobman, that is the third leg in this equation, will never speak out. Because an average vindictive Eurobman is more interested in what is coming from the east than the calamity coming from the north. But I am grateful that the panicky days of this modaya, Adabanjo, and the man that hands forth our respect. They are laughing of Oyo. He spoke, have you heard of that?
He said that he was introduced commerce today.
I will tell you what they are laughing of Oyo said, so that you may be able to understand precisely what is happening. He said that it is a shame that the Eurobans have become slaves in their own land. The same thing that we have been saying from day one. That Tinubu, if you continue along this path you're going, the Fulanis will swallow you. Without trace. The Eurobland will sink, and as we have said, they hoisted their flag in death. Who is the governor of Kiti State? The same thing they used to do to us, because Fahimi said he wants to contest to be the president of the zoo. They now said to him, "Prove your loyalty to the Fulanicali." That's what they do now. When Obiano wanted to go for second term, they said, "Try and kill as many of your people as possible." That is what is happening in the zoo. They thought we would not have the presence of mind to bring all of those to the attention of the world, but we have done so. To put it the way, this is, this is the foremost paramount ruler in Eurobland. Because if I were to say this, they will say IPOB, they have come again. They are seeing signs of discord. I like Eurob people, I have nothing against them. But they are misdirecting the competition to the east, they should face the north. Because we have nothing against them.
Genocide and the weakness.
They can't hear me at the back? For production after this?
It's not because of the angle, that's the problem.
I don't think I need microphone. I will tell you what the Aladdin of Oyo said. In line with everything we had been preaching on Radio Biafra, to prove to you that the whole world is listening. He said, "It's a shame that the southwest has chosen to feed on the crumbs from the table of illitriots." Everyone is now awake. Now the Eurobans understand that Biafran's, the east, is not their problem. They now understand what the Jangja weed had in mind for everybody. And while some of us, even the very few who are here, not in this fall of course. But those of you who are being sponsored by corrupt politicians from back home. You must understand, as the days of these corrupt politicians are numbered, so are your days as well. That is to tell you that what you're doing is not a joke. The zoo is now paying attention. Very close attention. And as we are moving from building to building on Capitol Hill, office to office, so is the zoo. That is the question. How long can they do it? Are they more hardworking than we are? The trick they are playing is very simple. Subdue these people and keep the result away from the knowledge of the world. That's what they're doing. And if you go now to talk about what happened to us, they'll say, "Oh no, that was 50 years ago, let's talk about what is happening now." And we said them it's not changed at all. We tell them that the Fulani Muslims are killing Judea Christians from the east. They say, "No, no, 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 there's nothing like that, it's not happening." Are you aware of that? How much did Bouharé, when he was alive, give to the Clinton Foundation? Five hundred million dollars! And that has gone to form this false narrative, that there is nothing wrong going on or happening in Nigeria. Don't you know that? What do you think that lobbying is all about? Because there's a same way will come from. Is that not how it is done? Because you're not there. We have come to the USA and now they understand what is happening to us. No longer politics as usual, now the world is aware of what is happening to us. And the funniest thing is that the Fulanis can no longer help themselves. The dam has been bust. They cannot, they can no longer, they've opened the floodgates of hell. They are coming in from the Sahel into all nooks and crannies of the zoo. And some of us are here, and as I keep saying, when I say this, some people continue to laugh and to smile. If we don't do anything now and do it very quickly, by the time some of us get some, there'll be no more home to go to anymore. What happened to the Jews of Israel will happen to us. By the time you get in there, others have now taken over your land. Is it only him? Who didn't hear what Danjuma said? This was the man that was charged with killing our people.
Three hundred and four officers slaughtered and massacred.
Killed in that same damnable contraption. There are some people who wake up in the morning and say, "I'm a proud Nigerian." They never loved you. It didn't start from 1960, no, 1966, no, 67. It started since 1945. They made it very clear. You make us feel inferior. They've said it many times. The reason why they are campaigning to stop Biafra is because they know that once Biafra comes. Their primitivity, their backwardness, their illiteracy will be led by for the whole world to see. Because the world will ask them, "Are these Biafrans not the same black people from Africa as you?" That is what they are afraid of. Some of us don't understand it. They say, "Oh, you're a Nigerian, you have a house, you have a plot of land in Abuja, you have one rundown town in Zingero." The people who are responsible for our plight today in our land don't seem to understand the damage that they have caused to us. And I can assure all of you who are here, 50% of you, which is half, if your children make it back home, then you're very lucky. Do you think they are coming to your village? And want us to be very honest? Do you think they will come to the village, that when you're gone, they will stay in Obinna and live the rest of their lives? Is it going to happen? This is to let you know that IPOB, Biafran's, is actually doing you a favor. It is doing you a favor. I have said this before, some of you who are here, if your son or your daughter were to go over to Mexico to bring his son, would you say no? Can you stop them? They have too many enemies. Ordinary town homies in Baltimore, Facebook can't allow us to stream it live. Yes, of course. This is the second time they've shut us down. Yes, that's what I do. Because any, any agency, any government, any institution or structure that has presence in the zoo is compromised. Are you hearing me? Anybody with presence in the zoo is compromised. Because Facebook is in the zoo. That is why they are able to go in to shut down what we are doing, because they are panicking. They know we are exposing them. And they know that the whole world is listening. And they cannot stop us. They know we are un-bribable. They cannot buy IPOB, it's impossible. The only thing you can buy is something with a price tag on it. If there is no price tag, the only thing you can do is maybe, if you have a very dubious disposition, you try and steal it. You can't buy IPOB. And the zoo is crumbling as a result of it. We are doing you a favor. IPOB is doing you a favor. The only chance of having those your lovely children, your sons and your daughters coming back home to answer your name. Join Othumunna in the village is through IPOB. Only with the coming of Biafra. I'm even sure that some of you, were your children to say, "I want to go home for Christmas," you will say no. Because this place is unsafe. Deputy, can you come round? So if this goes down, we'll battle Facebook.
Well, we can, of course. They lost a lawsuit last time.
The whole world is listening here for information. We are live to the whole world. I told the people that Djibril was dead, sorry, Bouharé, Djibril took over. Isn't that what I said? And, um, the... Asha Bouharé has confirmed it time and time again. But the animals in the zoo won't listen. You know what they do, you know what the zoo did? They went and cut out all the incendiary programs I did. Gave it to their lobbies on Capitol Hill. So anytime I go to see a senator, congressman or woman and I come out, they go in there, they start playing my broadcast to them. That I harbor hate. That and they hate preacher. I told the world that Bouharé is dead. They didn't believe me. Of course, maybe they did, but they are lying to themselves. TY Danjuma said, "Nobody will sleep if I reveal what is happening in Nigeria." Because they are all under a satanic oath. When I was saying it, they thought the world would continue to be very rosy for them. They never realized that Abak Yari had other plans for them. The man who was in charge of Nigeria is Abak Yari. He is the president. He was the one that recruited Djibril. From Sudan. They know the truth. The Eurobman media that should have carried the truth declined to do so. Because it would mean that those miscreants, we are right after all. Do you see what that somebody that envy and jealousy can destroy you? They don't want the world to say that what IPOB is doing is correct, or that we are truthful people. Today, that monster they were helping to feed have now come to consume them. And mark my words and write it down, they will never ever stop until I've conquered everybody. Do you think they're going to stop? Because the Fulani also understand that should power leave their hands again, that is over for them. That is why we must remain very determined and very resolute to do everything within our powers to support whatever project or program being run by IPOB. That Biafran will be restored very quickly. And without further delay. For our own good. Not just as a nation, but also for your individual families. Because since 19, let's say since 1980. How many people do you know here in the USA went back home to occupy their father's compound? How many? Yeah, actually, some went. Some left as engineers and came back here now to do security guard. Is that not correct? That is the type of nonsense we are looking to stop. There is a former Defense Minister. There is a former defense minister. He was very prominent in the running of the zoo. The same thing they did to cancer, the same thing they did to Adakaboro. The same thing they're now doing to Ojusokalo. The same thing they will do to Kekremadi eventually. The same thing they are trying to do to Ziti Fano by, who is capital. Abali Bay, they know is untouchable. They know Abali Bay is untouchable. They understand that very well. No, it was an old news. An old news. They know he's untouchable. All these people, we are warned and they were told, the only way you can survive is by supporting IPOB. If you don't, they'll come after you. They never listened. And today, what is happening to them? The Fulani people who are corruption themselves, I mean corruption. That the ones now pointing a kissing finger, saying that, um, other people are corrupt. So you're telling me there is no corrupt governor from the north? That is Awasan Fulani. Or Fulani, so to speak, not Awasan people at all. Because Awasan people are victims themselves. I'm sure you all know that. The same way that I warned you that what Fulani did to Awasan people is what is going to happen to everybody. They are very clever. They are very, very clever. They come, they say, "We are fighting corruption." They've been fighting corruption for, for the past four hundred years. They isolate a few number of you. They convince you that their cause is worthy, that, um, Buhari has come to fight corruption. They stand on that to destroy your way of life. Adam, is anybody from Enugu State here? Okay. There are fourteen Fulani settlements in Enugu. Settlements. One, four, fourteen of them. How many priests have been killed in Enugu? How many? Do you know that Miet Yana was given three million dollars in Enugu? To stop for that killing? Yes. Yes. Are you aware of that? So even the money that belongs to us, they are giving to, to Danjuma. They said they have taken Ojusokalo's properties. Properties he acquired allegedly using other state money. Is that correct? Who do you think should be the rightful? They said it's federal government. Who did about the judgment? A badly educated Fulani judge. Yet our people are still blind. When we are small, there is a saying, we are the ones who are doing exactly that now.
Yes.
They came to Nimbo. They came to Zouwani. They killed us. And people from Enugu State, some are saying they are Nigerians. That is how foolish and how mad some people are. They blackmail Uguan into giving them fourteen choice pieces of land with which to establish a settlement. And you know how it goes. They start with a settlement. Next, there will be a salary, salary of the area. Isn't it? And next, they get a voter's card through Jega. And then voting their people to go to your council, local council. Isn't it? And then they have an Imam. And from an Imam, they now and some of us will be saying, "Oh, he's in one Nigeria." The counter argument will be, "Are you not in Sabongeri in Kanu?" But if you're foolish enough, you won't understand. We are in Sabongeri. We worked hard for it. We built Sabongeri. It's a privately owned business. We are not in their land, occupying their land. Am I clear at home? Some people from Enugu say they are Nigerians. The same thing is happening in Abu. Where IPOB is battling them. I say it openly everywhere I go to. We are battling them. There is a war in Abu Yestate. And we're fighting them. They are killing us and we're killing them. They understand that very well. The state government doesn't want to talk about it. The police and the army doesn't want to say it, but we know what is happening and we are saying it. Some of you are not aware of the sacrifice that IPOB is making in Yestate. Without IPOB, we have been gone by now. What some of you see is what we do on the surface. You don't see what we do when the lights are out. And it is all thanks to some of you, or should I say, all of you. Where's the coordinator? All the people here, are they, are they with us? I want you to understand something. That the work we are doing is for your own good. It's for the good of yourself and your family. If you don't fight for Biafra, who is going to fight for Biafra? I asked before, when, before we started, would you prefer that we do nothing and sit at home and do nothing? Now I'm asking them. Anybody in America that is not part of IPOB, would you prefer us to sit in our respective homes and do nothing about it? Um, where's the deputy? What did, um, Tanco Muhammad say? A few days ago regarding Sharia and the constitution. Exactly what I said when they appointed that Parmentaba. I said it. A man who is not lucid enough, not well versed in common law, he doesn't know anything, can barely express himself, is your chief justice. And when I meet people on Capitol Hill and I say to them that Nigeria is being Islamized, they say it's not possible. What is your proof? And I show it to them. Is anybody going to stop them from beginning Sharia? Can you stop them? Can you stop them? And you are still a proud Nigerian. And you're from the south. And I mean the south, by which I mean the east and the west. And you are a Eurobama person. You're saying you're a proud Nigerian. Because probably you're a Eurobama Muslim. Your allegiance is to the north. Because the spiritual leader of every Muslim in Nigeria is the Sultan of Sokoto. These are the dynamics you need to understand within the zoo for you to appreciate how hopeless some people are. Therefore, it does not matter. If you're a militant guiding pipeline in the south, it doesn't matter if you're from a Loring or from Quara. It doesn't matter if you're one of those people that their village or their land was forcibly appropriated to make way for Fulani settlement in Abu. Once you are a Muslim, you are answerable to the Sultan of Sokoto. As your leader. Do you understand it? Do you now see why a sizable number of Eurobama people will always misbehave? Because they get their orders from the Sultan of Sokoto. These are the things that most people do not understand. Whereas you have some Eurobama people who are sensible, who are trying to do the best they can to liberate the Eurobama race. You have other people who are far more interested in maintaining their religious brotherhood by placing their allegiance and of course, giving it to the Sultan of Sokoto. Do you now understand what is happening? Do you now see why there is need for us to make haste immediately to ensure that Biafra is restored? And the role that you all need to play in it? Not by, by wasting our time and, um, opening banks and doing things that no one asks you to do, things that are irrelevant. And I'm asking, how many of you here have spoken to your congressman or senator? About what, what, what we're passing through back home? Only four people in this back road. You should try and do that. There will be a program we are rolling out, that very effort we managed by our deputy, Mazuchamefo, to ensure that wherever we are in the USA, that we make contact, regular contact with our delegation to Capitol Hill, by which I mean senators and congressmen. Absolutely vital, very key in this very effort. You may say it has nothing to do with huge. I assure you. They will listen to you more than they listen to me. They are now coming from the U. Can never, are never ever going to vote for them. They know that very well, that you are the ones that vote for them. And your vote will always count. And there is one thing about Western politicians, they don't play with their constituents. They don't mess with voters. Some of you here can do more work than we are doing, not by going back and hatching a scheme that is irrelevant. Despite the fact that some of these people may be under oath. You know, in this very effort we are making, I said before that day, this race to restore Biafra is a divine project. And the same way the zoo are busy pursuing us all over Washington DC is how Lucifer is pursuing some people as well. Of course. Lucifer. If you are not strong spiritually, you will fall victim to the machinations of darkness. You can no longer defend your stance or the stance you took a couple of weeks or a couple of months back. We should do all we can to ensure that such spirit never, ever possess us or goes into us. Danjuma said that people are scared of this regime with his own mouth. Because they understand the mess everybody is in. And to those of them that talk about South-South, Niger Delta, Delta, Bendel, and God knows what else. When they not speak, when Fulani is talking, they say, "They know." When Middle Belt tries to revolt or to rise up to assert their identity, they say, "No, they're rebelling against them." But they are the same people that came and told that this is Niger Delta. This is not South-South. This is Bendel. This is Midwest. If you try to do something where they come from, they say, "No." Some of you don't know that when they talk about the north, that includes the three Igbo local governments in Benue State. Are you aware of that? So you have Igbo people who are part of the north. And we are aware of that at home? And we are aware of that at home? Danjuma is saying it. And they are, they are speaking up and now I believe that the zoo is about to crumble if they can hold their nerve. And when we say that we want Nigeria to come to an end, not the people who are living in Nigeria, not the various ethnic nationalities in Nigeria, no. We want the name that Edifice to come to an end. Should the people wish to come together to be under one nation or under one country, it is their prerogative to decide. This is something that neo-colonialists don't want us to be saying. That in Europe and elsewhere around the world. They see what they have created, these things that they have done in Africa, as something that, um, that they did us a favor. You don't know that? That's what they said. "Oh, we don't want anything that will disrupt the colonial boundaries." I, and I keep asking them. But Scotland can go, yes? Yeah, Scotland can go if they want to. But why can't Biafrans go? No, because we don't want to disrupt the boundaries. Some of you don't know the battles we are facing. Some people go on social media and they write, "Oh, give us Biafra, please." As if it's easy. It's never easy. And the work that IPOB is doing now has never been done before, ever, in our history. Do you know that after the war, according to Irish records in Ireland, which I might, they say it's five million. I keep saying three point six million. The Irish, um, newspaper published, I said it's actually five million people that died. Yes. Five million dead. Here was Onanesa in nineteen seventy-six after the war, so to speak. There, there were no group of people that came together to say that what happened to us is wrong. Let's try and correct it. Everybody jumped into the wagon of, wagon of one Nigerian. If they had insisted, at least for a public commission of inquiry, some kind of hearing, what is happening today would not happen. But because the Fulani succeeded in committing Holocaust and they got away scot-free, they got away with it. That is what is emboldening them to set up their checkpoints. That is why if you, if they slap you and you slap back, they kill you. That is why when we come to protest, they shoot us. Because they were not held to account before. And those that want to be called leaders failed in their duty as leaders then and are still failing to this very day. Armenians in America, again. You know Armenia? Have you heard about the Armenian genocide? Have you heard about it before?
Yeah.
Nineteen twenty-one.
Nineteen again?
Nineteen twenty-one.
Armenian genocide was recognized here by Congress. When? A few days ago. Because Armenians in America said, "If we don't do anything now, the Turkish government can come tomorrow and even kill more people." So when you bring your suffering to light, you're putting the perpetrators on notice that the world is aware of what you did before. So if you start again, the world is responsible. But we have not done it. I don't live in America. I said it from the beginning, those who started with us from initially. Two sets of people will get us Biafra. Two sets of people. Or two things will need to happen, sorry. Two things will need to happen before Biafra will come, rather than this. The involvement of our women and the rising of those of you in America. Only America, only Unuwan Eba can give us Biafra quietly and peacefully. Are you doubting me? Everybody. I keep, I keep saying this all the time. The Somalis that came yesterday, are they more than us in number in America? Let's be honest. Are they more in number than us?
They are less than ten thousand.
But they are organized. They are organized. I wish for once we can put ego, put our self-importance, put our very greedy nature behind and try to be fools. We've been doing something, we've been wise all these years, we've accomplished nothing. Let's try to be foolish, just in here, only six months. And you'll be shocked what we are achieving in America. That six months, no envy, no jealousy, no greed, just do as you're told. For only six months, you will see what we are achieving in America. Because our enemies are not relenting. And Unuwan, do you know, plenty of them. There are those in Britain that, that believe that the coming of Biafra will signal the end of the war. Listen to me, everything I tell you is gospel. It may sound very... It may sound very Atlantic today, but tomorrow you will be the one to write on Facebook, it's true, I heard it before. There are those that believe that Biafra, of course it's true anyway, that Biafra is the light of Africa. When you meet them during our normal routine meetings with them, they will never tell you that. They know you more than you know yourselves. They know we are industrious, they know we are blessed, they know we are hardworking. They know that engineers are born from our mothers' womb, they know that very well. It is their responsibility to stop you from emerging. So you have more enemies than you can ever dream of. But every power on this very earth belongs to God in heaven. And as I pray, as I pray all the time, do you know why we are successful most times? Because when I go down on my knees to pray to Chukwembe Kabiam, I say to him, are you now telling me that you love the Fulanis more than you love your children? And within two or three days, things will begin to happen. There is always confusion in their camp. Who's funny that? They will say put your phones on mute. Try and put your phones on silent, it distracts, distracts. So now that the Middle Belt have realized, let me tell you what Dankjuma said, which is what I have been saying on radio, Biafra from day one. In Yoruba land, everybody seems to have lost their voice. They are scared, and people appear not to care about what is happening. They don't care. And now everybody is being consumed. The Fulanis cannot come and take the East without, and leave the West alone, it's not possible. And they have the numbers to do so. They have opened their borders. Your own borders are closed, but theirs are open, you get up the next day and you say I'm a Nigerian. You are helping Abak Yarim and the Fulani Kabao, the Jangja with the Caliphate, to fulfill their mission and their goal without you knowing it. Every day you wake up and you say, I am a Nigerian, you are advancing the Fulanicos. The only thing that drives them away, both physically and in the spirit, is the name Biafra. Once you mention Biafra, I jump more Fulanik. I'm on a jump more, I'm feeling, always. Spirit. Dankjuma said, if you want the details of what is happening in Nigeria, I'll give it to you privately. Better I am, they cannot give you mine in public. That's what he said, he said, he said it here. If I tell you what is happening in Nigeria today, you will no longer sleep. He went on to say, sir, so Chief Ayah, they're just warning and advice is very timely. If you want details, I will give it to you privately. Somebody said, what is he afraid of? And I said, because he is not a Biafra. Only Biafrans speak the truth and damn the consequences. Only us, only in the Ozon, no other set of people. And this is something we all need to understand. The same isolate and kill they employed when they killed, they used to kill Adakaburo before him. They will continue to use, to kill us, to divide, to kill, to eliminate. Once you are vulnerable, they pick you up, and you're gone. Despite all the years of service and servitude to them, all ignored. I remember now, if you remember when we were small. You know, when you were born, did I give you goat or chicken? Isn't it? As a child? When you grew up with that chicken? Is that correct? Are you all listening? You come back from school, you drop your school bag, the first thing you want to do. Do you know the funniest thing? One Easter or one Christmas on media television, your mom will ask you to come bring that same chicken. Some of us turn to emergency military and after. That is our life with the Fulanis in the zoo. They are looking, I have a Fulani friend, I am sure. When I preached to him and told him that they are wasting their time, they said, no, I have a friend, I have one of my friends in Soko, one of my friends in Canada, one of my friends in Medingri. Did any of his friends come? Did they come? They came to IPOB to do something about it. That is your lord with the Fulanis in the zoo. They pretend they love you, they pretend they like you, but they despise you. And it is a good thing now that the Yorobas are beginning to realize that they themselves are not immune to what the Fulanis are doing. You say you are a Nigerian. The Yoruba Fulani servant will say they love you. They will say, oh, why are you asking for Biafra? That's what they will ask you on social media. Oh, I grew up with, with, Adeyemi, we all grew up in Lagos. I'm not, I'm against Biafra, I don't want this Biafra thing, this, this your Biafra of the thing. That's your Biafra of the thing, that's your Biafra. Have you asked yourself this question before? Why is it that no seaport is working? Have you ever asked yourself that question before? Have you asked yourself that question before? Why is Ewota seaport not working? Why is Kalaba not working? Why is water not working? Have you asked yourself that question before? Before you decide to be a good Nigerian, have you asked yourself why you have no international airport? On my way here? We drove past DWI, is that correct? Is that correct? There is Dallas as well. There is even a Reagan one. In, in a very small area, so to speak. Three international airports. Ask yourself that is claiming you're a Nigerian, I'm Igbo, I have my friends, I have our friends. And we play together, we go to club together. How many international airports do you have? And how many do they have? When we say what we say, people accuse us of hatred, oh, you hate people, you know, that is a lie. We want everybody to be free. There is no justification for Yoruba to collude with the North. To suffer us to kill, to impoverish us, to put us in so much agony and so much pain. The holdup yesterday is from Headbridge on the Chathoor. Did you see the video? Holdup. And I keep asking myself, we have, we have more people in the US than any other ethnic group, is that correct, am I wrong? Why must we keep quiet when such a thing is happening to your people? Do you think that the love of your people is by wearing ESI, I'm going to a function on a Saturday? That doesn't mean you love your people? It doesn't mean that at all? It means you're a greedy, glutinous fool. The only time you identify with your people, albeit so cowardly, is when there is rice or chicken and officers are involved. And drink. The way you treat your people. If those you are meeting here in America, you are to treat us that way, do you think that Biafra will come? We get better treatment from foreigners and Yoruba whites people, more than our own. The way things are back home, are you happy? Are you happy? Anybody who lives in America and you have children, you say Biafra will not come, your children cannot follow you home. Your name will die in America. If you are in America and you say no to Biafra, you say no to IPOB, you see what is happening and you keep quiet, you will lose your children in America. They will marry white people here, they will marry Hispanics here, your name will die in this very place. Let me ask you this. Do you think we are doing what we are doing to be what? Why do you think we are doing, let's be honest with ourselves, why do you think I'm doing what I'm doing? Let me say it one more time. I am not leading IPOB to become the president of Biafra, I will not be, no matter what. I am not doing it so I will get contract or land.
Or influence.
Or influence. As I told them yesterday, once Biafra comes, I will go to a place called Iyogit in my village. I will build a house and I'll build a ditch around it, I'll fill it with water and I'll put crocodiles inside. Because serving people is not easy. It's the most difficult job in the world. I see Trump sweating sometimes when they are going. And I keep telling myself, I wish Trump can come and head one, one group in Biafra land. I'm sure accodentals are here, they can testify, isn't it? Sometimes I hear a man, attack a team. But all the same, we love our people because they're very unique. A very special breed. Despite of all the, I wouldn't call it disappointment, it's part of all the challenges, I think that's the better word, we are encountering. There are people in prison right now. People have sacrificed themselves for this very effort. 28 died in my house that I released. Because of them, we march on. And because of them, Biafra will come. And our message to all those who are unfortunate enough to find themselves in the zoo, courtesy of the British, the mission of IPOB is to set everybody free. We are not going to come to your land to ask you what is in your land. Instead, we'll give you the ones we have, and I want to repeat on record, on record, that every part of the zoo will receive abundant oil and gas to do as they please. Anybody telling you that we are fighting for Biafra because of oil and gas? You will know that person is very, very stupid. It is in our interest as Biafrans to make sure that Yoruba has oil and gas in abundance, to grow their economy. Fulani the same, you do understand what economic growth is all about. I will even go as far as you love Western Africa. For the simple reason that it is in our interest that they are also, in our interest. I've said it before, I think America is about to sign the NAFTA, is it the new revised NAFTA? It is in the interest of America that Canada is doing well. If Mexico is doing well, do you think they will cross over the border to come here? If we don't help to grow the economies of Oduwua, of our neighbors, so to speak, then the influx will be unsustainable. And we don't want that.
We don't want that.
We don't, not at all. Therefore, everything we preach, everything you hear, this effort to restore Biafra is the responsibility of every man, woman, and child in the USA. The state of Israel was born here. Albania was born here, Kosovo was born here. Even Eritrea was born here. They don't even hide it, southern Sudan was born here. They say that those with Abraham as father don't go to hell, is that correct? We have all of you in America. Why should I come to Capitol Hill and be struggling all the time to convince your own congressman or woman or senator when you're there already? And it won't cost you anything. And it will even listen to you more than they listen to you. These are the assets we have that the zoo cannot stop. Your congressman is not going to give your name to DSS back home, of course not. You can make phone calls, you can follow them on Twitter, you can do it, can't you? Don't do that, just tweet your local, even your mail. And say, this is what is happening in my land, we need to bring the issue of Biafra to the streets of America.
They have already sent us Christmas greetings, those senators.
These are the things, because you are the ones voting for them. These are the things you need to understand. I don't know how to say sometimes for us to begin to appreciate the enormity of this very task and the need for those of you in America to rise up and do the needful, do what you're supposed to do. We are marching next year in July, is that correct? If you have not taken your holidays, if you've not got that July again in the Ghana guy. July 20th.
Okay, after their independence, okay, which is great.
July 20th. June 20th. They wrote it forward, to June. Sorry, June 20th, they have changed from July now to June. You know, we are tenants, genetic landlord says. Okay. The fly will be out very soon. Now, now, July 20th. Sorry, June. June, June 20th, June 20th, yes? Go and get all your children and your grandchildren out of school on that very day.
Yeah, so the young schoolers are out of clothes. Yeah, which is elementary school.
We need all our children in Washington DC for this very matter. Everybody must come. Everybody must come to let the world know how big we are here. Once we do it, they will start looking for us. We will not go look for them.
Game of numbers.
Because we have the numbers, and we can make a difference. It is about time that we begin to reason, as I said. The next six months of 2020, I am begging all of you, those who are here and those all over the world, we have been doing our sense, 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 sense for many years.
Eighty years.
It goes nowhere. I am begging Biafrans all over the world to try to be stupid for the first six months of next year. And you see what we achieve. As a people. The only people now stopping the Jangja with from their march to the south is IPOB. Are you in doubt? Are you in doubt? Chairman Andy and Mahir Menola, they don't know what is happening back home. We are everywhere, we own the land, the land belongs to us. And there is nothing our magic can do about it. That land is ours. And they can never come in. And I have not told you, also, as a result of the moves we are making in Washington, telling them what the army is doing, I observed the information today that the Nigerian army have decided to pull out of Biafra land. Some of you don't understand what diplomacy is. When you meet a congressman, a congresswoman, and you're telling them these are your problems, they may say to you, first, I'm not interested, this thing can't resolve it, but because they are when they go by, they think about it. And they see there is merit in what you're saying. And then they act upon it. They may not tell you this country is here to serve a purpose. And we built this country. As I tell them. America is strong today all over the world because they received two hundred years of free labor. Is that correct or not? You know, I speak the truth, when I went to China, I also spoke the truth. Those two hundred years of free labor came from our ancestors. Is that true or false? So we must take advantage of our situation here to help our land. Very, very important. Very, very important. Very, very important. The zoo army said that we have no, they have no secret challenges but all the same, they have to stay there. Because of IPOB. And as I keep saying, every generation that will come after us, even their children, children's children, they will remember IPOB.
Or forever foundation.
Sunny said to Danjuma, let Nigeria born and be free instead of hiding the truth. So those who were scared to speak out before, they are now speaking. Because we sacrificed a lot of lives. This same IPOB remained very resilient. That is why those with a little courage are now coming out to say what previously they were afraid of saying. And he went on to say, he was a former senator, to say Nigeria is sitting on many fault lines is an understatement. The difference between IPOB and any other group, any other nationality, any other ethnic group is that we say something, we stand on that everything that we are saying and we do something about it. Unlike the rest. Unlike the rest. And that is why we remain ever so formidable. My happiness today is that right across Biafra land, I said across a lot of Biafra land, everywhere is reverberating and resonating to the message that IPOB is facing. IPOB in Lebanon, of all places, Lebanon. Is entirely made up of our brethren from Afik. I don't want you to think that IPOB is an illegal affair or restricted across the Nigeria. Everybody wants to be a part of, because they have seen the law, they have seen the truth. That what we have been saying is the truth. We are not against anybody. We are not asking to take your land, to take nothing at all, but for everybody to be free to decide what they want to do with their land.
Simple.
That is why today they reference us. And no fences will be are they going to mend any fence? Omar Al Majiri, what's their name? I don't want to mention their name. Those that work for Anga of the Life, the people that issued their fitness. All those who go eating. Do you know what they said? Let me see if I can find it, because anytime I do news analysis, I always use what they say. I always use what comes out of their mouth. Do you know what the Al Majiri boy said? He said that they should go and do that the zoo should incorporate referendum in the constitution. Did anybody read that very news? No, you didn't. I will find it. Which did I send it to you? I'm going to find it. That was what they said. That they want, I have it with me. I have it with me. Somebody sent it to me on my way here. I couldn't believe it. I could not believe it. Because these are the things that we are doing that some of you do not know is resonating within the zoo. The person actually said, and many good news on my way here, to be honest with you. Even the Wall Street Journal have written about what the Fulanis are doing. Is here. On my way here, it was sent to me. So, that the work we are doing on Capitol Hill is yielding a lot of results. Of course, of course it is. Of course it is. I want to find it for you so you can, you can read it. Uh huh, it's from the Nation newspaper. Nation newspaper. Not the rubu. Omar Al Majiri na kom. Al Majiri does Al Majiri kids. Northern group, northern group seeks inclusion of referendum in constitutional amendment. And they can't reason as to why. Nation, go and look for Nation newspaper. Okenya Network, Heba, Nation newspaper, please look for it. Northern group seek for referendum to be included in the constitutional amendment. Look for it and find it for me. If you find it. And they said it is because of IPOB. Find it for me. For those of you that thought that what we are doing was meaningless, that is confirmation. Hugi, have you seen it? Has anyone seen it? When I went networking American.
The creator of our network. The creator of communication. Communication.
Find it for me, please. It's on Nation newspaper.
The communication inventor.
Absolutely. Have you found it? You found it. Thank you very much. Northern group seeks inclusion of referendum in constitutional amendment. They are now urging the National Assembly to without further delay. Because they know we are destroying the zoo. Without further delay. Commence the amendment of the constitution with the primary aim of inserting the referendum clause in the constitution that will pave the way for the restructuring of the country. They also went on to say that they are now faulting the failure of previous administrations for failing to include referendum in the constitution. Let's you know. We would have guaranteed member ethnic nations for the very first time. They are urging that the zoo is made up of ethnic nations. They are right to self-determination. According to this Al Majiri that was saying this, if this clause had been in the constitution, the country would have been saved, listen to the grammar. The country would have been saved the violent effects of agitation by militant ethnic groups in the country such as IPOB. And I told you before that after dealing with them, they will beg us to take our Biafra and go. I told you after dealing with them, they will say, take this, your Biafra and go. If the Fulani are wise, if they are sensible, they will give us, they will give us referendum tomorrow morning. Or else we will destroy the Fulani image all over the world. That will be what nothing.
Oh yeah, it's almost done. They have been exposed. They have exposed already. They will walk nothing.
They are playing with us. They don't know how determined we are. They don't understand how focused we are. They don't understand what we are prepared to sacrifice for Biafra. They underestimated us. And it's a good thing they did.
Yes.
If they knew how it was where, I'm sure when I was arrested, they would have killed me or shot me.
And damn it.
Now they know. Now they know we are Biafrans. Now they know there is no going back. Now they understand how serious we are. The Yorubans can choose to be slaves in Nigeria. The Biafrans will never be slaves.
They can't put us in the bag.
Never.
They have lost their voice. But we have not lost ours. We will continue to speak. I also have a message for all component ethnic groups in Biafra land. Those that they will give peanuts to and tell you, oh, that one will clean your village for you. Those they will go to, because that's what they do all the time. I call it the warrant chief methodology. You know, we had no, forget all this Azayi thing you're saying, you know, we had none before. Do you know that? When somebody says, oh, my father is the traditional ruler or the Azayi or the king. There is no king in our land.
Never.
These are warrant chiefs imposed on us by the British. And that is what the Fulanis are doing now. They determine who your leaders should be. I said it before, some people didn't try to understand. You see that in the neck of Morit, yes? We are going to set an example with him. They were the first set of people. When the Fulanis came into our land, when they came into Oka and beyond during the war, their aim, according to Motala Mohammed from his mouth, their aim was to kill everybody. Every male child up to the age of ten to twelve. Then convert them to Islam. Appoint them to be the leaders of our community. When that very plan failed, when that plan failed, they used one or two people to go and form Orhanese. I keep saying it all the time. Because I may call a meeting now of a few people together to start something. But you wouldn't know what I had in mind. You wouldn't know who sent me. Some of our people here in the USA, a governor will come and give them some money. Say, call your friends. And they call their friends. And they start one thing or the other, isn't that correct? Isn't that correct? That was what happened to Orhanese.
Or strategy.
And Orhanese became a tool at the hands of the Fulani caliphate with which to destroy our people. Because one of those arguing with me that Orhanese was formed by a notably warm man. And I said, you're talking ass.
A clown, a fool, you know, falsehood.
If they were formed, imagine that somebody with my type of outlook, or should I say the outlook of IPOB, we have to be in charge of Orhanese. Do you think three Igbo local governments will be in Benue State? Akadugan, I do, Heba. Do you think Ebama will be divided into three? Do you think Go People will be outside of that? There's a place called Ejaram in Cross River State, have you heard of that? Ejaram.
Which is Ejaram?
Do you know there are Igbo communities in Cross River State? Are you aware? They cut you and put you, when Al Majiri wants to draw the map of the zoo, they put one tiny dot. That's what they're doing in DC. They come to the office of the senator, they show one tiny red dot in a green landmass and say, oh, this people doing all this, they're only they are they're not even the majority of the people. That is why I say to our people in Afik, Ibibio, Anan, Eket, Orum, the Ijob people. I'm very glad that they were now beginning to work up in the world. That if we don't bind together, as the Yorubans have now realized, that they need to work with IPOB in order to stop this influx of Satan. If you don't work with us, all of us together as one family, this great IPOB, we will be overrun by the Fulani caliphate. The Fulani themselves have not, they have not fought in the war before. People always fight their wars for them.
That's right.
Are you listening to me? Fulani gets you to do their dirty work for them. Fulani did not defeat the Hausa. Fulani convinced the Hausa to fight themselves. During the war, Fulani convinced T Y Danjuma and the Middle Belt to fight Biafra. The entire infantry corps of the Nigeria army was made up of people from the Middle Belt.
Yes, seventy-five percent, seventy-five.
They are in Sokoto calling the shots, saying, oh, we are one Nigeria, we not. What happened to the North? And I said to the North, if you were together and won, how come you started with only thirteen states of Sharia? Why not the rest? Do you people know that the Bagi people, where Bangida or Bangida's mom comes from, they are agitating for their own commission in the zoo? Those that own Abuja, are you aware of that? They call them Guari, their name is Bagi. But because in Hausa language, they cannot, because of the syntax, they cannot pronounce a Bagi. That's why they call them Guari. Yes. They cannot somebody speaks Hausa cannot pronounce Bagi. They cannot, go and try. It's just asking them to pronounce president. These are historical facts in the zoo. Today, they are fighting to be free. And I want to encourage every group in the Middle Belt. I want to encourage everybody, every ethnic group in the zoo to rise up against this impending doom and disaster. Or else we will all be consumed. And what happens? Hausa people will happen to all of us. By the time you know it, it is too late.
God forbid.
Do you think the left will help you abroad?
No, of course not.
You think they will help you?
No.
That is why we need to work very hard to ensure that Biafra is restored in our time. Others may fall apart, but this very IPOB will never, ever fall apart, never, ever, ever. I have told you this story before, but I will repeat the same story tonight. I will keep saying it until it filters into our skull. Fulani people are migrants. They are not Aboriginal, they are not original. Listen very carefully. They are not original to Sokoto. Sokoto is Gobair, not Sokoto. The real name is Gobair, not Sokoto. I repeat. Fulanis, they came. The stupidity of the average Hausa person is the reason why we are in the mess we are in today. Understand this very well. If you understand the mindset and the approach of the Fulani, you'll be able to defeat them. We in IPOB will know. And that is why we are defeating them. They came into Sokoto with their cattle as usual. That happened in seventeen fifty-four. In seventeen fifty-four, they came into Gobair pretending they have come. You know what they started saying? Oh, we have come to fight corruption. From Senegal. All the way from Senegal. The same way today in United States, they are fighting corruption. And they said to the Hausa people that we are actually Muslims before this vandals came. That the version of Islam you are practicing is idolatrous. Is not consistent with the teachings of Is not consistent with the teachings of, uh, what we now know today to be the Wahabi sect. That we need to change them. They employed Otman Dampodio as an ordinary teacher. A teacher to teach the children of the kings. Who was then in Katsina. Are you following me? On hand, you go near for a pony like those who are opening bands. You come to my house, I cooked for you, I presented it. I called you to come and eat in my house. And you're not telling me that, uh, the way I'm shoveling the rice is not good though. But it's my rice I give to you. They told, they told the Hauser people that their kings were corrupt. You did not ask the person telling you that your kings were corrupt, what his motives were. And, uh, funny enough, can you turn off, can you turn off your phone? Please turn off your phones if you can. Silence. And in nineteen oh four, nineteen oh, it's not in eighteen oh four, eighteen oh four. He, he managed to convince the Hauser peasants that, that is, the thing stopping them is corruption. That they have to fight this war against corruption. And they started a war against corruption. The Hausers foolishly fought war against corruption against their own people and overthrew their kings. And the Fulanis replaced them as their emirs. As the, as the Fulanis, listen to this very carefully. It is zoo. It has a very funny history. As the Fulanis conquered the Hauser people, the Hauser helped them to conquer the Bagi people. Yes. You know, the Hauser people, they have, they have, is it fourteen families they have, isn't it? The seven bastards and the seven legitimate. And Bokoi and, um, they helped them to conquer everybody. Now, the Hausers helped to conquer the Bagi people who helped to conquer everybody else, the thieves, everybody, all the way to Idoma. That today some of the people are Muslims. Are you aware of that? They conquered them. When innocuous Fulani plan to conquer the Hauser people ended up at the conference of River Niger and River Benin in Kogila. They started moving towards the east. When they got to Medugri, the sheriff of Brono told them, no, 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 that is Islam here already, please go back. That was why Brono remained untainted for a very long time. As they conquered the Hausers and the ethnicities of the Middle Belt, they now descended on the Yoroba people. They conquered the Yoroba people. That is why they are Muslims of Yoroba land. Not just along the way to, to Lagos Island.
Eighty percent of Muslims are Yorobas.
They came to Biafra land. As you know, they would. They came to Biafra. And what happened to them?
Sixteen seventy-seven.
They died. Since a flag hit on them.
Sixteen seventy-seven.
Ordinarily, there's a flag. For those who don't believe in God and heaven, to put the card in my pocket. Because there was need for God and heaven to preserve his children. And they died. And the planes of men went. And they were very, very upset about it.
Ninety-seven percent.
And, uh, Otman Dampodio swore that they would give the Quran in the Atlantic. And the only person that they felt could do that in modern times was Muhammad. Yes, that's, that's their mission. To bring Islam into our land, to conquer all of the people. Because we are very proud people. We are blessed people.
Yes.
That is why they are doing all they can to subdue and to subjugate you. So anytime you foolishly say to yourself, I am a Nigerian, you advancing the Fulani agenda in your life, not just ever in your own life. Anytime you rise up in America and you say, I am a Nigerian, you are responsible for your children not going home. You are responsible for the end of your lineage. Because we give back to children and we named them after. If Biafra doesn't come, I will give to America. The only thing that can bring your name back to the village, because the best days of our lives we spend abroad, isn't it? When the people knows when we are dead, they take us back. When we are useless to our community, that's when it takes us back. I need you to understand this very, very clearly. Americans are in America developing America, is that correct? Europeans are in Europe developing Europe. Only when they are export goods. Even now, we've taken South Africa from them, they are now even returning back to, to Europe some of them. How do you think that you can live in America, grow your family in America, and where you come from will be developed? How is that possible? Oh, some of you think that if you make your money in America and you go back home and you build a store, you build, somehow you've done something.
Oh, no. Never.
You build a house and you will live there, you think it's an achievement? What contribution are you making towards advancement of the lives of other people?
No library, no hospital.
No library, no hospital.
No road. No road to the house search.
Do you see why we need Biafra? And do you see why you need Biafra more than Biafra needs you? Because it sounds very perverse, but it's true. Biafra is actually a selfish enterprise. If you don't own Biafra as your own property, as your own thing, I'm doing it for myself, you will fall by the wayside. You can't do Biafra from Nambekan or wherever. You're doing it for yourself. Because in this Biafra, that is what will guarantee the continuity of your name. The development of where you come from. The pride you will feel as a free person. All this, 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 that. Are you not tired of it, yeah? Go put a say black and white, black, everybody say. Are you not tired? Are you not tired staying in the place where you are? You can never, ever fulfill your life. Are you not tired? Maybe some people enjoy being slaves. But I don't. I don't enjoy it.
Never.
And can never enjoy. The man you call you by outside, after being your slave neighbor outside, you come back and you subvert your land. And, uh, and the Fulani, Janjagul is lording it over you. And you accept that? People who are illiterate.
You go to school, I'm wicked.
Stark illiterates. Uneducable. Impossible to educate, no matter how much educated they are. Al-Majri will be Al-Majri forever.
For five billion years. That's what they are. They are culture.
I will keep asking the same questions that I ask all the time. Can you show me one Fulani poet?
Never. Never.
Can you show me one Fulani scientist? Do we have any Fulani scientists? How come they cannot do anything right? I have never met a Fulani doctor before. Where have you met a Fulani doctor? I didn't say Hauser doctor.
Yeah, I haven't seen them.
Have you met them before? Have you seen them before? How come they cannot be a doctor? They are not pharmacists. But they are good enough to be president of a country. And, and expect them to develop. Is that possible? Sometimes I ask myself what type of planet people living on. People who are black, people who are industrious, people who are hard work. They are not qualified to be president. It is those, Minatshinama, who cannot be president. Do you see how poor reason in the zoo? People who are nomadic are now qualified to hold the highest office in the land. Those who are educated are in America. Doing irrelevant jobs. And you're telling me that all is well in Nigeria? You're telling me that to be a proud Nigerian? Who is a proud Nigerian here? Who is a proud Nigerian here?
Nobody.
I want you to understand something. It is your responsibility. Biafra is yours. You must own it. If you have, if you're not aware of what is happening back home, I please urge you to acquaint yourselves with atrocities going on back home. If you don't know already, you ought to know by now, that our land is under occupation. You cannot come out as a free being to express or to say whatever right they claim they have given to you via their sham constitution. That is why Biafra is going to come. And that is why nobody can ever, ever stop it. Therefore, as we are gathered here today, I must make it very, very clear that Biafra belongs to each and every one of us. IPOB is our own thing. It belongs to everybody. It belongs to everybody. And try to always resist the temptation because the devil will come, I assure you. Try always to resist the temptation of the devil speaking through you. Of always finding fault and not being able to do things the right way. IPOB is a family under one command structure, only one, not two, not three, not four. Once you're under oath, you have sworn to abide by the structures of IPOB. Not your own. I am fond of when people come to see me privately, we discuss one or two things that, you know, we have in mind or what we are doing. And I've noticed that each time I do that, some people go out and try to implement that very thing they have said we ought to do. And that is a very serious disease. We are not in any competition with anybody. All we want is Biafra. I've said it before and I'll say it again. Had Owasuke behaved himself, they have learned it for IPOB. I have said it many times. Had they been consistent, truthful and transparent, they have learned the IPOB. I don't want our people to think that somehow we are in some sort of, um, a race between each other. Our race is against Awasa, Awasa, not, no, Fulani, not Awasa. I keep saying Awasa Fulani sometimes. If we tell you what we have in mind to do, unless there is an order to go and implement that very thing, you are not allowed, you are not at liberty to implement it. I said, whatever thing you can do, do to ensure that Biafra is restored. It doesn't mean you should take an idea that belongs to DOS, you are privy to, and try to implement it yourself. When your mom says to you after school, oh, go into the kitchen, there's a pot of soup there, take some and eat. She is not asking you to go and empty all the meat and the fish inside the soup. You're supposed to have common sense. Is that correct, mom? We have a problem which maybe we are going to have a day of prayer and fasting. I'm telling you the truth. Because our enemies always come together to fight us. We must always band together to repair them. Unless you're asked to do something, don't do it. Go and get people, preach this very gospel to those around you, go to your workplace, contact your, your senators and your your House of Reps members. Take this very word of Biafra to them. The materials you will send to them, we will circulate to you. That's what we want you to do. Not to go and start opening a bank. That's not what I asked you to do. Because if you try that, the name of Biafra has now entered their records. We will now come up with our plan for the bank that would, the corporate bank wanted to float, it was very difficult for us to carry that through. We wanted to float a corporate bank, not banking for everybody, for a reason. Why you need such a bank? We lost the war because we couldn't get weapons in. Are you aware of that? That was why we lost the war. Our fathers were playing about with sticks, pretending it's a gun. They go into battlefield with nothing. It's only those they can kill on the enemy's side. They take their guns, isn't it? Do you think Fulani can defeat us in a war? Even if we are, if we are blindfolded. We had no guns. We had no guns during the war because there was the lines of credit open to us. I'm saying this now because, um, they have ruined it, what we wanted to do. Those idiots, they have ruined it. And those of you that were able to speak to, but because you lack discipline, some of you, you listen to nonsense. Ask the person, was this your idea in the first place? We are fighting Fulani in, in Ebony State. Did I ask you to go and fight them? I'm telling you, we are fighting them. This is what we are doing. Did I ask you to go to warfront?
No.
We have men who are doing that. It's not your job. Your job is to go out to evangelize, to provide help, to provide funding for, for the, for the work they're doing on the ground. I didn't ask you to go and fight. Or because IPOB volunteers are in Ebony fighting. You go and open your own in, um, in a number. That shows lack of discipline. It goes to show that you don't understand. If we take that mentality into a war, we lose. That was why Ojubu gave money from his own pocket, his father's money, go and buy weapons. Am I speaking the truth or not? That is the same thing here. When you're given a responsibility, when we say to you, hold this position, hold it and do the best you can. I didn't ask you to go and do something else. A lady went to Red Cross in London in nineteen sixty-eight, sixty-nine to go and withdraw money to buy relief for starving, dying Biafran children. She was arrested by the British. And the Red Cross account frozen. The reason why we wanted to leave the bank was to make sure that every line of credit will be open. We can pay for equipments and the travel to come. We didn't open it so you can be, you can have Visa card and Mastercard. But now, all the different kind of my video now going on. Giant bank. Can you imagine such ill discipline and stupidity? Something so secretive, now our enemies, they know. Now they know. Because they leveled as a terrorist group, we need source of funding that they cannot question. We need source of funding that they cannot question. My Facebook. Some idiots have been busy laughing and typing and liking you. I see that, that, they are mentally diminished. My happiness is that they will never come home again. They will never come home again. Because men have died in this very effort. Oyebere was fighting for you and he was buried in Eboni. I'm sure you saw his body. Fighting to save you so you can have land to go back to. Idiots in America opening a bank as if they are rich. That is why an opposition as big as the World Global Congress could not make any iota of difference in our lives. As big as they are. With WIC here, why wouldn't them, they cannot come from the UK to come here to lobby your, your lawmakers? Why should I? You are the ones to do it and tell me what is happening here. What we ask you to, you will not do. Ordinary one, one dollar, one dollar. Do you know how much it costs to engage a lobbying firm in Washington DC? I ask all of you, go, go and try and recruit one tomorrow. Ordinary one, one dollar was a problem. One, one dollars became a problem. Can't you afford one, one dollar? You can't afford one dollar? Because Fulani people are laughing at us, they are counting on that thing you have inside you. That destructive demonic spirit you have, to question and to argue everything. That's what they're counting on, to colonize and dislave us. When they stick, they say, we know you can never be united. We know. Only one dollar only. Is it going to kill you? No one dollar. You're not an IPOB. You're not going to do it. Later you ask also, when is this Biafra coming, sir? Others came here and they got something. Because some of these, they were the ones that would drive us away. They would say, oh, God brought you to bring Biafra, Biafra has now come so you can go home and, and dance there. Let us, let take no class in America, come and run it. After all, I'm a manager with IBM or Google. That's what he would say to us. And mark it down. This thing is going to happen. You will come from America to tell us that you're coming from you know how to do it, that we that suffered and died should get away and say it. Are you doubting me? We have their willingness. Come and join us to make Biafra a possibility. Before it becomes the reality of our time. Because your participation is very, very key. Learn something from America. Everybody supported Washington, didn't they? Did they all support Washington? Learn something. Learn something. The thing about us is that, because we are very, you know, the whole world is listening. You know, people say, don't wash your dirty dishes in the public. Better I wash my own in the motor park. You need to understand something. We are very competitive by nature. Isn't it? We love, we love to compete. This person has built one-story building, I want to build two. It's a very good thing, very, very good thing. But that also brings us to destructive envy, very destructive. We are not in IPOB, in this Biafra restoration project, we're not in a competition. But if you have a superior idea, you can bring it up. It's my job to listen to advice. I may not take advice today, but I may say something tomorrow and decide to implement it. The fact that I'm not using your advice now, doesn't mean I hate you or don't regard you or don't know what I'm doing. When we are advising the zoo, preaching to them, did they believe us? We need to understand this. That in Giroka, what is ahead is bigger than what we are seeing now. That Biafra belongs to you, it is your own. It doesn't belong to me, it doesn't belong to DOS, doesn't belong to, it doesn't even belong to IPOB. I know in a wider context, everybody is IPOB. Insofar as this movement is concerned, all over the world, pushing and moving ahead. It doesn't belong to us. It belongs to every single soul. And by the time we have run this race, only those who are worthy, it doesn't have to be us, will be eligible to serve Biafra. Of course. Uh, we don't know who those people are going to be. You, the people, will decide. That is why I urge you, this very evening from here and nighttime in Biafraland, to, to do all you can to support our efforts. A lot of things I cannot say on air will be coming your way. Just do it. It won't cost you anything. Just go and do it. That's what's going to happen. And some of you will think, eh, eh, instead of you to contribute your own one, one dollar every month, you'll be thinking, how many are we in Baltimore? Somebody will tell you, oh, oh, we hope to, two thousand in Baltimore. You say, one dollar times. But when Alimajiri comes to your village to kill people, you start calling IPOB. And the reason why we are asking you to contribute a dollar every month is how it is done in the olden days. That is the only census we can have. That is how, and how we know how many people who are with us. Do you understand me? So the same way that we go to your congress and they ask us how many Biafrans are living in the Maryland uh, uh, state. I can't tell them unless I call the coordinator and they tell me, so, so, X, Y, Z amount of people paid. They are wondering that. That is how you identify and you say you're very serious. That is why in our land, we don't point at people. Are you aware of that? You know why we don't point at people? And then I go on, we don't count one, two, three, four, we don't do it. You say you don't know the reason why? You know, one dollar first. When a woman gives birth, back home, you never ask a woman how many children have you. Are you aware of that? It's a recent thing. Oh, how many kids do you have? We don't do it, we don't count. You don't count them. Is, I refer you to the book of Numbers. When you go and read it, you'll be able to understand. The fact is that you, you identify yourself or you are counted based on what you can do. I would tell, I've told this joke before. It's from, it's an Nbe Se joke. And, and it ties into this one dollar, I, I forgot of time.
All those people that's back at the other side, please, be honest, we have to pack across.
Please pack across the road, please. On the, on the street, please. If you're parked at the back there, please move to the, move across the road and pack over there, please. Um, are we, are we good to go? The reason why if you park on this side, just move across the street, but if you park on this side, you're okay. If you park on this side, you're okay, but if you park on that side, across the street. Uh, please let me know when you're, when we are good to go. Are we okay now? Okay, yeah. Are we okay now? IPOB, one family. My younger brother was born there, that is when I come to this country. We were also there during the war. The reason why you need to pay one, one dollar is this. Um, there was a very rich man that came back to the village during Christmas like this. And the man brought bags of rice and green tomatoes. And asked all the widows in the village to come. So you can give them some rice and green tomatoes. So one man observed the wife getting ready to attend this rice-sharing event. The man said to the wife, but they only called widows. The woman said to the husband, give your one. So if you're coming to count your typical census, you count the man as a man. But to the wife, the man is no longer a man. That is why you need to make contribution to, for us to know that you are there and part of us. So when we are speaking, we speak with authority. And if you say that somehow we become very, we'll be, you know, flushed with money and and that is not a good thing. Let me ask you this. Do you know how much it's costing us in Eboni to keep the Fulanis out there? Do you know how much it's costing us? When any of our men falls on the battlefield, do you think we abandon their families? Do you think we abandon them? Those are some of the things that we are doing. That you don't know about. We fought them in Anambra and we drove them away from there. We did. In Emu, the same. In Abia, the same. They kept, they wanted to use the cover of the barracks and offer to come in. We said, no, we drove them away. We are fighting every blessed day. And we need your support to sustain it. We didn't have this number of people in the diaspora between sixteen seventy and seventy. If we did, we would have won the war. That I know for sure. Let us complete the job that our fathers started. Let's complete this very war that everyone wants us to complete. Thank you very much. Um, if you have any questions, you're free to ask. I believe I may know that, is that correct? You have questions, you ask. What is your name? Please introduce yourself first.
Speak English, man.
Biafra is the quickest way to get something in here. Uh, because the people who are lobbying on your behalf know the system. They know where the bombs are buried. So it's usually the quickest way. So what my question is, and which I will also forgive myself to do here, is how, what's the best way to raise funds for the lobbying? That is my question. Um, thank you very much. Uh, our brother is asking what is the best way to raise the money? If you have been paying this one, one dollar a month, there, you don't need to ask him to do anything, is it? One, one dollar, what means, come on. Then from there, we pay them. But what you do concede to is that lobbying is a very, very expensive business. Are you, are you one of us? Okay. There are those that may not wish to participate in the open. They provide help and assistance via the bank. They are also welcome to do so. So not everybody will be out there at the front doing something. Some also want to support, um, through the bank. And we must accommodate that. Very, very important. Um, that was why I said that Oyemah is the last person who would help. You are all aware that every group in the north, including the Alimajiri kids, they are all sponsored by their people. Isn't it? If we can achieve what we have achieved, given our limited resources, imagine what we can do. With so much more. Imagine what we can do. Lobbying is a very, you know, the zoo, who is, I think, is, is a banner that is with the zoo here. Their zoo's firm is called Banner, they're the ones who send them at this. Anyway, we go to the, they, they, they go the next day. Trying to rubbish us, telling the whole world we are terrorists, telling them that we started the war and all the rest of it. All the junk that the zoo can dredge up, they give to them, they submit to their people. So it's a very serious business, lobbying, and it costs a lot of money. That my happiness, how did you even manage to afford to, to bring them? I don't know. But we are doing the best we can. That is why every contribution you make never goes to waste. None goes to waste. I don't have a car. Understand this. I don't have a car, I don't have a business, I have no landed property, I have nothing, I have no savings. My savings is the coming of Biafra. When Biafra comes, if you want me to starve to death, then I will starve to death if you want. Because I, I need to keep my hands clean to be able to go very far. Because I understand Biafra more than most of you. Any day you become tempted, you start putting your mind on earthly things. Cars, buildings, hotels, uh, investment. You're finished. And we can't afford to do that. Everything I want, you are going to give me inside Biafra, not outside it. In this life is inside Biafra, not outside. You can't have a mountain and then you're resting, then the mountain is in front. Does that make any sense to anyone? Elohim has taken everything from me, my mother and my father. There is no other, I said to Jukokekada, I want to pray, there is nothing else you take from me. You've taken everything. Now, all I'm asking for is for Biafra to come. Now, all I'm asking for is for Biafra to come. Because every sacrifice has been made. What else is, is, is holding? And he said I should come and speak to you. That you people are very stubborn. Very difficult. And he said, "As you preach Exodus to you," which I will not preach today, "about your stubbornness and the way you tempt him and the way your behavior is what led to people who are beneath you to be ruling over you." If you don't see that as punishment from God, that means spiritually you're blind, you cannot see. People you're better than. People that move cattle from place to place are the ones ruling you. That means that God in heaven is upset with you. You must have done something wrong. And those mistakes is what we're seeking now to correct. To put ourselves on the path of the straight and the narrow. That we may be worthy to be called the children of Elohim. Thank you. Next person, please.
IPOB?
War family!
I said no. I have your chair, this is your neck. As you can see, because for over four thousand years, outside Moses, Joshua, and David, this is the first time you have waking up. Benjamin Netanyahu, three months ago, on this size of Bible code, now conference, he was telling a lecture that Israel has no constitution. He brought you Bible and wrote it. This is our constitution. And it started in 1948. We are very happy, IPOB family, here in Maryland and all over the world, that you are using the same foundation Israel used through David, Ben-Gurion, and, uh, Moshe Dayan, and, uh, God Amaya, who was a student of Arizona University in 1947. And you are making our foundation to be like Israel. And you said it in your first broadcast that you will replicate IDF. And that is only hope we will have. And I've been watching all your broadcasts and all other broadcasts. You keep on saying the same consistency. And this is the, oh, this is the first time a blood leader is using that. And that will make Biafra to have integrity. And the foundation will make it.
Ask your question, sir.
I don't have question. All I have is the prayers and the foundation. And this is the only hope we will have. The only question, it's not a question, I would like us to have is in our flag, when we are going to host our flag in our freedom and in the country, I would like us to include seven stars, stars, which, which base the seven ethnic groups of Biafra, which Ofunogu in the middle. Ofunogu, which is command and the status of God. So that, ofunogu, eppobonino, eppobonino, well, the same in Israel, man. We must always, my area, we, you know, we are not going to advance. And that is my, my, my contribution and I want to remember. Thank you.
That's your opinion.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Yesterday, one Nyanbe said, "Get us to go on your number." I, I like it, I like it very much, I like it. And, um, your advice is taken on board and we'll do something about it. I said something to people. When I went to Jerusalem to go and pray, you know, when the white man came, the British came, they said, "We have no history." Are you one of that?
Yeah.
Uh?
Mm-hmm.
They said, "You have no history." I don't know they were hiding this from us. Who is Marotuku here?
I am.
Obu if you know.
Let.
Arotuku.
Yes, she is.
Can anybody tell me the transliteral meaning of Yeshua in Igbo language? What's the meaning of Yeshua? Yeshua? Which is Joshua anyway. You see, this is the problem that we have. Yeshua, which the Europeans called Jesus Christ. The name given to him by his father and his mother is Yeshua Chizoba. Only the Israelites in Israel and us praise God with the name we give to our children, no other race does it. And, um, Chukokikabiamma said to me that those that fought before fought under a different banner. That we should go to battle with his name, Chukokikabiamma, and see if we will not be victorious. That's why I'm very certain that Biafra will happen. There are some who don't understand what we are doing. They say they are Omennala and Ordinala, who don't understand this spiritual dimension of this. Our land is holy, no doubt about that. Yes. I'm not saying it's not. So is also the land of Israel. That is why men go mad trying to conquer a place no place.
Yes, always.
But there is one original religion, only one, from which the other ones became branches. Is that correct?
Yes.
That original religion is the knowledge of one supreme creator and owner of the universe. One that our ancestors worshipped. Our ancestors worshipped directly.
Yes.
Uh, but because, um... Elohim is, uh, very fierce. They try to go through others to go and plead when they commit crime. Our ancestors, Hamayorjo, they can no longer go and pray direct. They start looking for one Amadi or a horse who can take you. Do you know that's why you have arrows in our place?
Yeah.
The small angels.
Do you know that there are small angels? Are you one of that?
Yes.
Uh, are you sure they know this?
We know, we know.
People have these lesser, lesser, lesser gods, small, small ones. Because the big one, when he gets upset, he kills everything inside. King Kuku, that big one, when he's upset, he kills everything. So when they commit that, they are crying. They do in those olden days. They, they hide behind a lesser god and a lesser god. Please beg the big one. Do you now understand?
Mm-hmm.
Not that you worship those small, small diseases. They are messenger. We ask them to go and please, go and beg for us. Because when Elohim is upset, you know what happens? Many, many... That's what happened. I don't want us to misunderstand it because some people think they confuse Ordinala with Omennala and what we are doing. No. The worship of Elohim is not a religion that you can call a particular name. Because that is the original, the number one, number one. I've said this many times on radio Biafra. In the olden days, before you become an Inzeh, not this one, the... Let me tell you why, what used to happen. Before you become a tattered man in the olden days, Inze Ozo, you bring out your tongue and they will make seven incisions on your tongue.
That's true.
They make seven marks on your tongue and it will bleed. Yes. And from that day, any day you lie. And that's why, it's your virtue. That is why you have to speak with truth to remain alive. If you lie, you will die. And that's why they start hiding under Amadi on hand. Okay, you can operate on that one. Because you know if you lie... And in the, and also go and check in our land. You know the boundary, we call it Ok. In our land.
If you move it.
If you move it from where it is, it will never be well. All these things that people tend to confuse, they don't understand. They don't understand what is behind what we are doing. It's a mystery to most people.
Yes.
They thought, we woke up one day and said to do, "Oh, Biafra is..." No, no, no. We, we understand the sacredness of our land and what Chukokikabiamma said. Our clock started ticking from the year 2012. Seventy-five years from then, if we don't achieve Biafra, I don't know how many years. I don't know within how many years. But if you don't achieve Biafra as possible, our race will be destroyed. And it was then that the, the BBC issued, no, it was actually United Nations, that issued a very grim report that the Igbo language will cease to exist within seventy-five years. These are some of the things that you don't know. So we are running a race against the clock to restore the kingdom of God upon the face of this very earth, which Biafra is. Which Biafra is. Some don't know this, but we do. So it's not just about freedom fighting for the sake of it. We are trying to do the will of God. People who don't understand won't understand. Thank you very much.
My name is, uh, Dr. Felix Sunis. I'm a Biafra veteran, ten-year-old, trained by Major Amajo Atam Olukrumai. I'm also from Mrs. Nyanbe. My number is BA308456. I'm working a lead in the Reiki. As I'm talking, I see faces of people who died. My years, ten years. I'm a recent IPOB member. I'm a recent IPOB member. I ate in the center of Uju. No, my, I come to my... My problem is America. Your leadership in America. America is the leader of the world. I'm here forty-four years old, American. And the people we have put or allowed in the leadership are the people who do not forget in Biafra. You have said it here. And I'm here to look at their faces. Somebody have spoken to me. I said, "I was before IPOB." Your leadership is why we don't have Biafra today. Don't answer me here. We were here in New Carleton. I have a house not too far from here. I called my junior brother when I heard it. I'm from, I just grew up from Philadelphia. I've been gone for three, four months. People be looking for me. I can't say where I went. I just came back. Immediately I heard, I closed my office. I called my younger brother, I said, "Go there and see you." He saw you. When you went to Chicago, another one saw you. It's on the video. Not here, please. Gather your coordinators in US, your leadership. That our problem here in US. Because you said here, excuse me, because if you are afraid, the fear fears the fearless. I'm a reverend, a chief, there's no title they haven't given me. I'm in Nigeria, four months, three to four months every year. Umar here. I am the pioneer of medical mission. I'm the pioneer of, of, um, telemedicine. Now, it's God. This, I don't call this Bible. Basic instruction before I live on earth. I call him the manual of life.
Yes.
If you have TV, you have your iPhone and you buy it from Best Buy, they give you a manual. Tells you the password. It tells you how to walk it. If you can walk it right, you can get the best. Same with that TV, that's the problem you all have. I read this, I read this at the age of ten. During the war, I read the whole thing, I read it every single year, this I have concluded it. I read the whole Quran, the Jita of the Buddha. I study religion. And what you're saying is, so I've been listening to you for years. Now, go and talk to them. There are problems. The vision I have for Biafra is not really democracy. The only democracy there is, uh, come and vote, determine who leads you. But we need a meritocracy. Meritocracy. That's what China does. I've been to China many times. Your coordinators need to read. L E A D, readers are leaders. I do leadership training. I'll give you my private number twenty-four-seven. I'm an, I've been an advisor to African presidents. I will mention that. They don't read, we don't read. Africans, after the certificate, after school, that's it, even here. Anybody have read the three novels this year, please raise your hand. I read, I read average of forty to fifty books every year. I've read forty-one this year. I just ordered eleven books. You can't run this world with common sense. All the things you are talking about here, I know, Inze, I know this stuff. Because you read. That's why you can lead. That's the problem with Fulan, you're right. How can someone who didn't go to school, have an office in Abu? Have across Nigeria. That's my number one. Then this is another important one that will get us to one of the things we need. Who knows about Blusmerok here? Blusmerok, raise your hand. Anybody know about Blusmerok? Do you know about him? Blusmerok died, what, May thirty-eighth, nineteen sixty-nine? At the age of twenty, nineteen forty-nine to nineteen sixty-nine. This is a young man that sat in the corner in front of United Nations and set himself on fire because of Biafra. He did something only Jesus did. And none of you know about him. I have, you go to obituary.com, you will see his, he, he says grave there. I put this, uh, um, you can go there, put a flower and memorize him. You don't know. We need education. Your coordinators are doing nothing. This man here has been with me to fish out our younger children born here, to educate them about Africa. We do that. That's what we need. Our leaders in America is a problem. They are holding Biafra. They are looking at me, if they doubt me, they come to me, I can come and say it loud and clear. That's why we say that if they don't move, we are going to find another relation to work with you and get what we want. It's an emergency. We have an emergency. We have an emergency. There are the problems. Now, I have said that. Onyandu, with your permission, I want to propose that May thirty-eighth next year, we are going to Blusmerok grave. Light, I'm looking for the family. I have seen one lady, he had responded, but not two of. We're going with candlelight that day. If we go there with can, all these major media will come out. The whole children will come out. That's how we can announce to the world that we are serious. Everybody come out after the marching on June twenty-eighth. I mean, before that, we take candlelight, Biafra light, stand there for as long the media will come. His grave is there. Go to obituary.com, go there, all of you now, and put there. Let's, you'll see my own there with a flower. You do it, obituary.com, thank you. Those two things, that's all I want. Our leaders here need to sit off. If they don't sit off, change them. Because before President Clinton left Nigeria, what did he say? He said, when you, what? It was Abba Tysler that said it first. When you can, you see insanity is when you continue to do the same thing again and again, and they're getting the same result. That's how he defined insanity. And that's what we're doing. You are asking us, have we gone to a congressman and senators? Who is supposed to lead that and do it? Our coordinator, have they done it? No! No, are there any collecting people to do it? No! So that's our start. From today, the dynamics must change. Thank you, God. Thank you.
It takes one man to protect a nation. And it takes a multitude to build a nation.
Peace hold.
And I strongly believe that every true Igbo man believes that you are God sent.
For sure.
As everybody sees here. And I know what it would take. For you to come to America one or two times in a year and go to other nations. My first question is this. Is your one dollar enough? Or is that the minimum? Can someone put more than a dollar? Okay, thank you very much. Why am I saying this? It will not take only hundreds of millions. Think of lives that will be saved if Biafra, you have to come tomorrow. Those lives are worth more than, each of them is worth more than ten million dollars.
Precious.
As hardworking as you are. One other thing I want to stress is that the, 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 the state, uh, American State Department. They are going around. And once they know you are a Biafran. They tease you with certain questions. Where did you come from? They start the discussion. What they want to hear, I believe that you are a Biafran and not in Nigeria. Because you tell them you're in Nigeria, they believe you're still not sure of what you want. You can say I'm a Biafran, but in Nigeria, I assume the person pretends not to understand the location of Biafra. You let them know. I've encountered so many of them. My name Joseph Muavose Chimarok. Abon Nubu. Was born in Abak and raised in Abak. If you knew there was boys company in nineteen sixty-seven, I started it by the grace of God. The boys company that later became the civil defense of Abak. I was born and bred there. It was nineteen sixty-seven, I was supposed to go to high school. For the war, because they are bumping school. Later, by the age of fourteen, I was a train com at Do, at Madonna train. B A two eight seven oh three one. So, what am I saying? I am in America by the unction of God. I never desire to come. I read the Europe, went to Roman architects, six years after. In, in, in Nigerian politics, God said, come here to preach the gospel. I am a pastor. Praise the Lord. And the issue of Biafra has been a burden in my heart. And of course, God has been giving some revelations. The last was that we got Biafra, but it killed a lot of our people. And I was one of those who are going around checking the dead bodies, some of them were in the gutter. But there was a, a certain level of joy in us as we are looking at this thing. So, so it made that we got Biafra. That was the third time I'm having such a revelation from God. So I want to say also to you, more grace to, to your elbow. Don't relent. It will cost us an arm and a leg, it doesn't matter. Praise God. So, one dollar is nothing to you. I'm sure if we decide that we can make it hundred dollars, we can do that. But God bless you.
Let me speak in English. And I want to be very brief. Because I know there are so many people that would have been much more better for the job than I should. And, uh, just like I said, it's a minister. And God bless you, we're in December here. There is something that brought me here this year. I had so several commitments here in Baltimore. But when I had this, less than twenty-four hours, I said, we're here. Is that my wife went to US fingerprint place. And based on the revelation that the Lord gave to me. I told her, when you go there, fill that application as a Biafran. I will tell you. She went there and filled in the column. Where say nationality. She says something that I say, Biafran. Then they asked a question, the lady came by, wrote by the paper. I don't know the kind of paper she filled. And asked her, is it a new nation where you say Google it? That's what she told the lady. And she Googled it right there before her. I said, you okay? She did it as a Biafran. And my wife got her fingerprint document, but I sent back to her as a Biafran. So that inspired me a lot because like to call it short, that's why I'm gonna call it short, because British talk so much. But it's not bad. But this thing I was saying to you people, revelation about Biafran restoration was given to me in nineteen ninety-eight. That was when Nigeria divided. So we are here to fulfill the mission. But my question is this, concerning this donation, contribution. One thing, what brought me here is that I want to know who is the coordinator? Here, because I don't believe in, there are so many chatter in the media, in the social media. Is this one, is that one? That's why I said I'm going to come personally. See who is the coordinator here, face to face, airport to airport. Because I have over fifty people. That wants to do some donations. And I can't even tell them anything, but to put it straight, the way it is, is there. What is the, what are we expecting to do at the name? The information concerning, information where this money will be paid to. Number one. Because there are several informations, even account numbers given, which were wrong. So I didn't know how to do it, but I can't give anybody any information. Go this way, go that way, that's why I say it's better to come directly and by myself. That's it. Then secondly, is this. The issue about, uh, Congress. Um, talking to Congress people, before I even come here today. I have been talking to Congress people, personally wrote them letters of over three hundred words. So what, there's something you mentioned, they say you will send us something that we will show to them as proofs. So I was trying to know how those things are going to be sent, because not only that, by the virtue of God's grace. Uh, I don't know how I got, I got attached to President Donald Trump campaign here in Baltimore. Then I sent the message directly to the president through one of the aids, and I got a reply. So I want to know. Let me just conclude here, I hope you understood what I said. Thank you, God bless you.
IPOB.
One family.
I thank everybody here. My name is Nella Ilebe. I'm an engineer, civil engineer, back in Biafran. For coming here.
An engineer?
Yes, civil.
Civil engineer?
Yes. But I'm not practicing in America, unfortunately. Um, I listened to what, uh, our leader said. Um, I'm gonna be brief. It doesn't make sense. Um, everyone of us here knows, um, how, um, hardworking he is. And, um, we contributing a dollar is like a slap on the face. We know how much, um, expenses are both here in America and in Nigeria. He's taking out his time to travel to all parts of the world. And, um, bringing out just a dollar is just like, we are not serious in what you are doing. If we can raise this to like five dollars. I don't think it's gonna be too much for any one of us when you go to, um, McDonald's. I don't think they sell anything, uh, one dollar this. You, you have to understand that, um, the, with the economic, uh, situation in Nigeria, uh, is more than what we, we are seeing here. And, uh, my second, uh, opinion again is, he has been, uh, he has told us that he has no income, he has no bank account. We have to make, um, provision to at least, even if we contribute money, let us set something aside. That this is what we'll use in supporting his mission, you know? He, he cannot, uh, steal. He cannot, uh, be bribed. So it is all of us here and maybe in other countries. If I can get out to other people, let us have a certain pause where we say this is for the support of his mission. But his transport, uh, hotel accommodation, feeding, you know? Uh, that might be another, uh, idea that I'm just trying to put up. Thank you, everybody.
One family.
The leadership of IPOB, I have said that, this is my first time of ever meeting our leader. And I said to him, I said to myself that. I will let him know that he represents the very pure and true essence of an Igbo man, upright. On Shikiri, I said that. A man that represents our truth, a custodian of our truth. It's not by coincidence that you are here. If our Chukwu appointed for this. And when they came to storm your house, I was just so despondent. I go, oh, Jesus. But then I saw you in Israel, I said, man, because he survived that, Biafrancy. My question is this. Oh, when this, uh, uh, third great, third, uh, class politician, Omaggege, they call him also. That he's going around trying to, uh, uh, make his people not be part of, uh, IPOB, you know? He's just going around doing that. I think he's a vice, uh, senate president. Exactly. And he's been doing that. Asham Kamalo, your feeling about this?
Um, I will answer and thank you to all of you, including those as well, and our near system. Um, thank you very much. Thank you. If Omaggege, he's, um, he's so good, he's secure. If our own ifulefu couldn't stop us. I also believe that he will not be able to make any difference. Because Ishakiri is Biafran. They are also blessed with common sense and ability to reason. The same way you are gathered here today is how Ishakiri's all over the world are gathering. And making sure that Biafran becomes a reality. Anything Omaggege is doing, he is ground to fail. And what happened to the others will happen to him. It will serve the zoo, it will come back in shame.
My name is, uh, Alora Musu, from Oga, in Anambra State. Nobody would tell me about the history of, uh, Biafran. If you know what Oga stands for, you should know better. So we have the history about, uh, Biafran and we'll some back on it. But, uh, my question is this. What is the best strategy to market Biafran movement? Within America? And I mean, within the circle of our people living in America. Why I ask this question is this. Our people are afraid. In fact, it looks like they are ashamed of, you know, discussing the topic Biafran. Even in different organizations, town union organizations and, uh, committee of friends. If you mention this thing about Biafran, nobody wanna listen to you. Why are we ashamed to discuss this? I give you one example. I belong to Anambra Association. When there was a massacre in, uh, Azurba, this recent massacre, I was so devastated. I mentioned that topic to the organization. I said then, what are we going to do to help these people, the government is destroying their lives? Do you know what somebody told me? This is the wrong, uh, place to discuss this topic.
How old is the person?
They know the service. You know, some of them, they say they are old enough, they, they are veterans, Biafran veterans.
They will not be from, no, Biafran veteran will never say that, never, never.
My director, I'm so extremely disappointed, I told him. I said, you know what they said? They said, um, um, that we should discuss the topic whenever we have meeting. And the meeting is likely to be next year. And because there is, uh, end of the year party, what they have to do. I said, look, life is more important to me than enjoyment. How can I be enjoying and then people are suffering? I said, it makes no sense. America stands for charity and humanitarian work. So what I would do in that position, I ask them. And you know, the next thing they threaten, oh, they're gonna get me out of the meeting. And you know what, before they get me out of the meeting, I got out of the meeting myself. Because I'm extremely passionate about the struggle. So I'm suggesting that we should do total marketing of this brand. If everybody is ashamed of being a Biafran, I'm not ashamed. And again, most of the people who are looking up. Most of the people who are looking out. You know what they're doing, my director? These people are busy conducting traditional marriages. In America, chitancy, permission of the culture. They don't want to do something that we encourage, we use to come out and see what we can do for our future. Honestly, I'm not happy to stay in America here. Because I know the best vacation I can have is back home. Or, or, or would go here, it's not gonna be the best. My director, um, I have to commend you, uh, for your ability to be here. First of all, I, I said, I told my friends. I told my friends that you changed my life. I follow you every time, every minute, I listen to every Biafran every time. My friends, when you went to Japan, I was talking with my friends in Japan, then we are giving me feedback of what is going on. I, I watch you and I follow you every time. So keep it up. Keep the movement up. Without you, there will be no us here.
It's true.
You raise our consciousness. And I will conclude by saying this, and I quote. Frank Fanon said. Every onlooker is either a coward or a traitor. Thank you.
Of course. Right, we are recording. We are recording.
Anambra Union in America will not support Biafran agitation because they take money from all Bia no. It's true. And I say this with every authority. That Biafran will be restored. And all those people who are not helpful when I came here. They will not enter Biafran.
Yes, guaranteed.
I tell them this, to do everything they can in America, in conjunction with the zoo, to stop IPOB and to stop Biafran from coming. Because they will fail. Biafran will come and they will not enter Biafran.
So my question is, because I know most of the time, my name is Chiama Kachipua and I'm from England. So my question for today is, I always mostly talk about how we engage the youth in Biafra movement. And most of the time when we come together, the people we see around us are the elderly ones, the seniors, the veterans. And I ask this question, where are your children? Not because I know you don't want to bring them here. And the other thing is that, all this Igbo group or other groups that comes together, a lot of the time their children are not even there. I talk to students, I'm a student, and most of the time when I talk to students around me, they don't even know anything about Biafra. Why? Because their father, their mother, they don't tell anything about it. And when you, I remember speaking with one and he said, oh, the war. That was the only thing he remembered about Biafra. And now that we are fighting for the freedom of Biafra, none of them even recognize or even have idea of what is going on. So how do we, just as my brother said, how do we market Biafra out there? Because we need to go beyond this us and get into the life of the youth, the teenagers, and preach this gospel of Biafra. Because we are not enough for the elders to say this to the youth. So how can we get out there to capture them young, in order for us to really get our message out there?
As in, Ajomane Oromi, is that correct? It is not how many they actually come on this very journey, is actually how dedicated the few that identify themselves are able to pursue this very project, historical completion. When we started IPOB, we went like this, I'm sure. The people you are seeing here today only came because they were able to receive information. Less than 12 hours, is that correct? And on social media. These are those who are active on social media, I believe, or have stumbled upon the fly on social media. Anybody that claims they don't know about Biafra, you are deceiving yourself and you're lying to yourself. What we are going to do, our brother,
No, he's there. He's there.
They said here about the leadership in America. I used to watch Bugs Life. I watched it within America, I'm not watching it in Africa as well. You know the movie Bugs Life? Have you seen Bugs Life?
It's a cartoon.
Go and watch Bugs Life, watch it. I remember Hopper, who was the principal grasshopper leading the troops against the ants, saying to the newly appointed queen, that the first rule of leadership, everything is your fault. If we are not doing that well, I'll blame the leadership in America. And you as a student, the best way to get something done is when you do it yourself, is that correct? So you will also have the responsibility of making sure that our students actually come out to a part of this. And that's our brothers there as well. Please stand.
That's a doctor.
A doctor. Oh, on the zoom, yes. As long as the doctor standing, not since I've been in America. He's a medical doctor, is he? Is that correct? I have never seen, if in the understanding of the zoo, a medical doctor can be a miscreant. I don't know what an alamajiri, kato riaru, will offer. Here is a medical doctor who is a miscreant in America. Unbelievable. He will join us and provide solutions. Because I don't know everything. I can't pretend I know everything. There are some ideas and suggestions you bring that we run with it. You and our sister as well. We need to mobilize our students and anything you need from IPOB leadership to make that happen, we do it. Another thing we are going to do in America is this. You must start IPOB family in your neighborhood. Some may not come out in the open. We must also create an avenue for those of them, they will find a little one where it came from zoo. You understand? They can come, you know the nekodemos? They can come to the back door. We also accommodate them. And we must take this very gospel to every association, every group. Our children must have their own gathering. Don't you see what they're doing back home? Don't you see it? Children, six years old, eight years old, they do their own thing. Their parents do their own things. So the kids will also do theirs as well, and our students too. The thing about it is that, there's always this concerted effort to make you feel ashamed of Biafra and who you are. Don't allow them to succeed. Never allow them to succeed. And of course, as we develop all these new ideas as to what we are going to do, I'm even sure that our woman leader here, they also have their plans and their wing is also growing very rapidly. Is to try as much as we can, wherever you are, you are a coordinator. Are you listening to me? Wherever, I have said this many times on your streets, you are a coordinator. Start an IPOB family, wherever you are, start one. In your school, you start one. Wherever you are, you start one. That is how we get this message across to our people. Thank you very much. Our sister, please.
Because to be honest with you, I love IPOB with all my heart. They have been trying to make this stop, but I totally look. I even want to know when they will start training us here, because we're gonna come home when it starts. Because war is inevitable. And I keep asking them, when are we gonna start training here, so can it be gone? The only thing that we have to be aware that we, it's gonna happen. And they're gonna come home. And I will not go home, not knowing how to shoot. Because if you kill me, because I will not be here watching them to kill me. So I keep asking them, when are they gonna start training us here? We can go to shooting range, but we have to start by planning it with, but our leaders here, the guy that set up our leaders here, he said the truth. I could have dropped out since, but due to the love I have for IPOB, I couldn't drop out. The leaders who have here, our leader IPOB here, they are 20, no, 16th century men, who have no understanding. We are 23rd century people. And this guy is leading on with archaic ideas. When you bring an idea, even a child can tell an adult to run away from danger. You don't have to say because a child will not run away from danger. If I tell you there's a danger, listen to me. The leadership you have here is the problem IPOB have. And the reason why Biafra have not come is because America is the one that will lead IPOB. No other people. This is where the money is, this is where the manpower is, this is where everything is. And we, all of us here, whether you like it or not, we need to carry gun, we need to know how to shoot. I don't know yet, but I wanna know how to do it. But we need to start coordinating it. But the leadership here, when you are talking to them, they push you back, they are like, who are you to tell me what to do? I'm like, I'm nobody, but I'm here because I love Biafra. I wanna go home. I cannot walk like this forever. I am dying. I wanna go home. I wanna, no, no, I know, but I wanna go home. I cannot walk like this in the next 20 years like this. And if suddenly go and occupy my father's land, where am I gonna go home, I go home. To kill me would be easy for them, because if they get people down there, niggas will go out. Who, who, who will do that? Nobody. So, Omadike, God sent you to do this work. I know it's not easy. I'm sorry for the death of your mother and your father. And I don't know how God gave you the strength to keep carrying on. Because I will not be able to carry on if it is me. I cannot carry on, because I'm a braggad, because I know what it is. But when you carry on like nothing happened, and God has created you for this. I know you sacrificed everything you have for this, but God will repay you. I keep telling them, they say that IPOB, they tell me I'm a radical. I said, no, I'm not a radical. I know what is happening back down there, and it's failing me, because it's my people that they are killing. And who is killing us? Dirty people that live in the bush. They do not wanna come and watch my own TV in my own house, that is a mansion, and imagine you wanna come and occupy my own house from the bush that they are. And they don't, they want to keep it. Because when they're coming, they will just mess up everywhere, because they don't know what it is. We are brought up decent, they are not brought up decent. They don't know what it means to keep anything. And they wanna come and occupy us, take our own father's house. So for God to bring you out to do this, he will keep you.
Thank you very much, my dear sister, thank you very much for that. As I said before, there is a place where you will work. Everybody has a job to do in IPOB, all of us here together. There's something, somebody will come around and take your details. There's something you will do for us. And we can move on, because IPOB structure and the way we work is designed to make sure that we don't lose focus or discipline along the way. Sometimes it may not go well with some of the radical ideas that we have. But we still welcome those ideas and intend to implement them. But I think you work with the women's wing to make sure that some of those ideas are implemented. Thank you very much, thank you.
I have to thank you, Chairman or President. I have to give you that present.
Inflate your voice.
Please, I have to thank you, you know, for all what you are doing. It's not easy. It's not easy, because a lot of things has going on. You put it aside and keep moving on. I pray that God will give you the grace to carry on this mission and nothing will happen to you. And we pray that we behind you. In anything we can do to support you, I hope we will do. And I'm saying it this evening, please, that one dollar is not enough. If you can do twenty dollar, I think twenty dollar will be enough, at least. Let's do twenty dollars. Let's say ten dollar going for the phone and ten dollar for a sino, moving around. Because whenever I comes here, you got to rent a car to come to this place.
For your information, it is from one dollar. From one dollar. It's not one dollar, it's from one dollar.
And secondly, whenever I look on the internet, I always cry each and every day. How these people moving every corner of Biafra land. I don't even sleep, because I have brothers and sisters. And if you are here, and you have people out there dying, tell me how you are going to sleep or how you are going to eat and have peace of mind. To be honest to you, that bothers me a lot. And now, my focus, my question is this. The way things are going on, they are bringing their troops each and every day. How do we have anything in case if this thing happen? Do we have anything for those that are back home to start with? You understand? That is why I'm talking about one dollar cannot, you know, help us. And another thing, please, let me say it here, everybody that is here, you know it right from this moment, we are not free. Nobody think that we are free, even if we are free here, there are people back home are not free. Please, let us do something before it is too late. Before it is too late, unless somebody that doesn't watch his cellphone each and every minute. Sometimes I quarrel with my wife, because I don't sleep. I'm telling you, each and every minute I'm on my phone, I'm shedding tears. Sometimes she bring food, I say I'm not eating, because I know what it is. I witnessed Biafra war, when I was little, people died. And we don't want something to happen. Please, we need something, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, my dear mother. I know that some of you have worked. What we are saying is that one dollar is the minimum and the best thing for us to do is identify who your local coordinator is. If you have no coordinator, you start an IPOB family where you are. As simple as that, please. Wherever you are, you start an IPOB family. And make contact with the state coordinator, and then from there, we take it on. Thank you very much. Can our mother here have, I call everybody mother, once you're a woman, you're a mother. Can you give her the microphone so she can see?
All have Biafra. So I have a song. But before this, I have a little thing to say. My sister was crying that she's still here, look at me with my age. I've got my children, all my children are in Nigeria. Whenever I tell them I want to come here, they will say, mommy, it's better to stay here. No matter how you are suffering, you are helping us down home. If you come home, you can't stay for one year and you are gone. I started thinking, I said, so now, I'm in a foreign land, I don't know what will happen to me tomorrow. And I don't have any hope as to when I will go back home. I have a song. And the song goes,
Can you hear microphone?
Thank you, I want to use this opportunity first of all to thank Onyendu and his deputy, Uchimefok. The day the zoo kidnapped Onyendu, I was going to walk. And when Uchimefok came up on Radio Biafra and announced that DSS have kidnapped Nambrkan and on their way to Abuja. I turned my car and went, because I couldn't, I couldn't move, I wasn't, I couldn't see anymore. Let me tell you. The resilience of Uchimefok during the absence of Onyendu, very prime two years period of our time, is the reason why we are still here. Despite all temptations, all the troubles he went through, sabotage, despair, he kept me alive. And I want this opportunity, please, to clap for him, clap for him. Like they say in America here, loyalty is number one. Loyalty is number two. Loyalty is number three. There is no point telling me, oh, my wife is very pretty and I have a pretty husband and everything, and he doesn't come home even before 3:00 midnight. There is water. Loyalty is number one, even in this country, most of you who are in corporate America here, know that if you are not loyal, if you like manufactured image, you are off. Of course, that is number one. Now, I would just want to go and take over two minutes. Somebody came here and mentioned the reason why our people are not joining IPOB or coming out. And I will refer you to a famous black abolitionist. His name is Nat Turner. He's from Sanctuary, Sanctuary, Virginia, born in eighteen hundred and he died in eighteen thirty-one. And I watched him. He came out and gathered one thousand men and said, how many of you need freedom? Move forward. And nine hundred, this is a history, can Google it. Nine hundred moved forward and the hundred was left behind. And he said, ladies and gentlemen, you have to take, get rid of this one behind me because this is our real problem. Can Google it, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a true story. He led.
Nat Turner.
Nat Turner, Nat Turner. This guy led the first revolution and abolitionist movement. He gathered the whole, both the freed slaves and the free slaves. And in eighteen thirty-one, when he saw an eclipse, it's a true story of the sun. If you look at, you see, he passed through Virginia. And he said it was his black ancestors that gave him this sign to strike. And he led them and they killed sixty white people, children, men and men that night. This guy was one of the brightest preacher. He taught himself, read his Bible, was, he said he was inspired. And that is why they descended on black slaves in eighteen thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four. Massacred, that is killed all of them. Tried Turner, Turner was flayed by a wolf, beheaded him. His head is now in national museum, Black Museum, his head, because they have to find him. Even the judge who tried him wrote a book. They all call it Nat's confession. So that is why in every, that in any war, they treat several wars very harshly. People get him out because he went ahead and somebody went and told the enemies who he was hiding in a convent that was covered by a fence. Enemies within him is our problem. Some flag complaining that people are not joining or when you go to meeting and then nobody wants to talk about Biafran. Beat Enugu out from Enugu state, beat Anambra, Abia and everything. And you know why? All, ninety-nine point nine percent of all the presidents, all the population officers are for Ebo or Biafran in this country. We are sponsored and paid for by our politicians back home. They were paid and put there. They are also members of this forum. So when they talk and they see you, they call them, say, oh, get rid of this one. We don't like what he's saying and they get rid of you. There are paid agents, there are paid monthly, some of them have been offered houses back home. So that's why I say, oh, if you want to do it, this is not a forum, I have to go to another forum. That's all true. There is no true Biafran who does not want to be, who do not want to be free. We are in this country because some people died, fought for it, were free in this place, opening a market and sat and joined a convention since you came here. They can never, they have not taken the light or the water unless there's severe weather. Even then, they will protest for you. And we enjoy it here and you tell me that these guys are normal? They're not. Let me tell you, he's not gonna stop because they know that the power is here. Every session, that's why they are fighting us in here. It is, it's a very relentless war. You are looking at a guy who have been excluded from Enugu USA because the first video that were posted when the man was chased in Germany, a friend of mine, a cardiac surgeon, and a schoolmate, and a classmate, a roommate, sent me that video and were person who sent it out a medieval. And they traced it to me and made sure they removed me from forum of Enugu USA till today. No, meanwhile, I am the highest donor, the chairman of all the occasions in that forum. By the way, I have a medical doctor of thirty-five good years. Do well for that. So I'm telling you, people cannot give up. Because you are looking at a divine man with a divine project. Of course. Let me tell you too. A hard worker complaining leadership and everything, it is not easy to lead a people. You have to realize that one quality of leadership is you live by example. If you criticize me once, please, please me. If you criticize me three times, three times. Secrecy is source of power. The reason, there's a reason why we give this short notice, we give a ban, say, two days or two hours. There's a reason for that. And those people that make sure that this guy is safe, this is my, I want Onyendu. These people have a pride for me. Because all Onyendu has okay. So no name, no no name. All the way from Houston.
I thank, I just, I'm overwhelmed. I'm very, very overwhelmed. I've been here in the US for a couple of years. It is time for us to go. To the point that we are all here wasting our talents. And really, you can, you can make them there. I mean, in terms of hospitals.
Everything, we have it all.
We are just praying for this Biafran to be real and all of us will come out. But right now, personally for you is I took on the Facebook. So you will need care in a cuisine now. Biafran home for you both and for all of us. So they tried Mandy, Mandy, the river, all those people. Even your mother is so bad. So if we say my cuisine, now I say, okay, Biafran is for you and me.
For freedom.
So I thank you so much. Another thing, the Biafran money, as of now, have again on eBay. It's two hundred dollars.
By how much?
Another thing, a bunch of our people now, they have this T-shirt. And the one maybe the other thing, and the post it to you guys. So you got a Biafran shirt?
Yeah, thank you very much. I want to answer what you said regarding regarding Ambarzoni, regarding Ambarzoni. When the Ambarzonian president went to Sweden, he was also welcomed by Biafran. He was also welcomed by Biafran when the president went to Sweden. So we are a lot closer than the outside world know. And for understandable and strategic reasons, we're keeping it that way. So we are all one and who knows in the future, we may even become one nation. And IPOB, as I said earlier, is fighting for liberation of everybody. There are people from Edo that want to be part of Biafran. You can't stop them. Anybody can join IPOB. Anybody can, including House of people, they can join if they want. If you subscribe to our way of life.
Values.
Value system, live and let live, democracy, equality before the law, then you're in Biafran. So we are fighting for everybody. Thank you very much. Thank you. And after you, please, can they give to that our mother? Yeah, it's been, I asked her to speak. After you, then it's her, please.
Thank you. Hi. All here Biafran. Doctor Donal. Another doctor. I have, I have an observation.
Go ahead.
Each time you pronounce something right in your face, some people dislodge what you say. I followed your broadcast, I listened to your broadcast in Israel. You said, let there be county by county, let's establish county by county families. And they are all families who have their coordinators and everything. And right now, you just said that you can become a coordinator wherever you are. But we have a problem, sir. The problem is, those of us that will stop families are not recognized by the cabal or some clique or some people that are will get to themselves on level of power or authority to dislodge the main focus of IPOB. They thereby exclude the majority and then walk in seclusion. Now, my point is this again. There is a problem right here in Maryland. And I remember in Atlanta, you appointed a national mobilizer who should be in charge of affairs of IPOB nationwide. To our surprise, to you, to you be amazed that this man have been sidelined and he cannot operate. And second of all, there is this idea from the national coordinator. I say things they are. I say things the way they are. I'm fearless. There is somebody in the name of a national coordinator who professed to somebody that if the Zou government gives him money, that he will take it but then will not deliver what they want. This is a clue of the kind of people that are the hem of affairs in United States of America. The movement of IPOB is stalled. You might not see it from England. We live here, we see it. There is no progress anywhere, sir. Sir, Deputy Ute Menfo was here two years ago, last year, two years? Two years ago, yes. Yes. He tried to
fix it.
Fix the situation. In the name that everything was okay. He left, things went back to square one. You even looked somebody in the face who accused somebody of stealing public phone and said, where is, do you have any evidence that he stole money from the meeting, from the family? Yes, open back. But to our surprise, to your surprise, the rumor still goes on that somebody stole somebody's money, group's money and everything. So this is the problem we have, sir. Please, I don't know how you're gonna do it, but it would be nice if you fix this problem before you leave. We want to move forward, just like what my sister said. We, this is twenty-fourth century. We have capable men and women that can execute IPOB. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you very, very much. Thank you. I want to answer very, very quickly. I appointed a national mobilization officer and I want the whole world, because the world, you know we are live, the whole world. Don't mind that you're just seeing only two computers here. The whole world, people are listening in Biafran via FM. So everything you're doing here, the whole world is observing it, watching and listening attentively. There is a way that IPOB works. I have said here, go and become a coordinator wherever you live. But that doesn't mean that you are IPOB on your own, doing whatever you like. We all, we all have a chain of command. You have to respond to. That's how we operate. The national mobilization officer is not in charge of anything. All he does is open families and hand over to the state coordinator and his job is done. And he should also be part of the national executive. In other words, he should be part and parcel of the running of IPOB in United States of America. I have a flyer with me here that says East Coast. East Coast. I don't know where East Coast is. But I know, I'm coming. I know Maryland. I know Massachusetts. Have you heard of it? I know Virginia. I know Washington. I know New York. I know New Jersey. Now, what we have done is to decentralize as much as possible. Every state in America, IPOB family is autonomous. So I recognize only states as it is right now. So New York is a state and run their own affairs, pay their dues direct to Germany. Same thing goes for New Jersey, for Washington, for this area, for Maryland and the rest of it. And I would very strongly suggest that our people who are in the East Coast should go back to the local families they have and be a part of it.
That's where we are.
Yeah? Now, now listen, listen very carefully to me, please. There is no East Coast. Please, very, very important. All of you in the East Coast, if you are in Maryland, you reported in Maryland family. If you're in Virginia, you reported in Virginia family. And DC the same. Now, I do concede that is something we don't do very well, which is to identify good ideas and raw talent and be able to not organize and take that along. I am going to, we are going to build something into the national structure of USA. I am going to, we are going to build something into the national structure of USA to recognize people who are willing and able to do or to execute projects that will add value to what we are doing.
Yes, yes.
Do you understand me?
Yes.
So that ideas can be carried along and no one will be left behind. And I want all the coordinators listening across America and all over the world to try and be like me. I'm a very inclusive person.
Always.
Anytime I come to do something, I start from a position that I don't know everything.
Always.
I'm always learning. If they tell you I can learn something from a cartoon, box life, you wouldn't believe it. But I was working with my little boy and I learned something from there. I'm sure some people will say, how can I learn something from ordinary cartoon? But I learned something from it. We must be receptive to ideas and not feel threatened all the time. Somebody can bring a good idea and we feel to ourselves, if we execute this very idea now and it becomes very popular and widely acceptable, they may take proposition from me. That's what we think sometimes. And it shouldn't be that way. That is what we are going to do. We, we have Dr. Koro, who is Dr. Koro, I'm American. He is our national coordinator. And you also know that sometimes I allow people to remain in their position because in the new Biafra, we would run a multi-party democracy. You may lose election this year and the other party will have to be in power for about four to five years. I don't expect you to pack your things and run away from Biafra land because another person is in charge. I expect you to do all you can to support an administration and even bring your ideas to allow them to grow. So, I expect everybody here to support what Dr. Koro is trying to do in IPOB. Give him advice and he may not take it today, tomorrow he will take it. That's the way it is. And another thing is this. As long as you're able to function and flourish in IPOB, your ideas taken on board. You shouldn't have any worries as to who your leadership is. Do you understand? Or else you'll become like any other EU organization. Struggling all the time to build down the leadership. That's why, as Doc said a while ago, when you could sell somebody four times, at least praise them once. So that when you talk to them, they can listen to you. That's all we're going to do. I repeat, please, I repeat very strongly.
Are you listening?
There is nothing like East Coast, I've seen this flyer. This thing, if you want to run any project involving all these states, is a question is there? You speak to the various coordinators and you say to them, can we all get together and do something? That's how it's supposed to be. And nobody will exclude anybody, they do something. Who is excluding you? Wait, wait, hold on. Hold on, hold on a second. Hold on, hold on. Yes, hold on, hold on. Please, please, listen to me, listen to me. Which, which state do you belong to?
I, my name is Jesse Moke. I'm from Afara, you know, and, um, in the state. He, um, I'm with the Maryland DJ, Maryland.
That's, that's what I'm, Maryland.
Yes, yes.
Who is the coordinator for Maryland? Why, who is the coordinator?
Uh, can I tell you what you have?
I want us to understand how IPOB function. If you are from Maryland, this is your coordinator. Hold on, are you listening to me? Now, I want you to listen again very carefully. This is the Maryland coordinator. And you have no business as an IPOB family member in Maryland with what Okoro is doing nationally. Because, hold on to this. Before you get through to Dr. Okoro, you must go through me. I want you to understand, for the sake of discipline.
Always.
There are many fake IPOBs all over the place. People openly are shocked by seeing how IPOB, better not. So, we need to be able to identify those that follow our command and controls.
Always, always.
If you are not disciplined, you cannot be in IPOB.
Period.
Just with this.
Period.
And whether, listen, listen, please. Whether you like it or not, this is your coordinator in Maryland. And listen, please. The bug stops with him.
Yes, yes.
Do you understand?
Yes, sir.
Now. Structure.
Discipline. I don't go anywhere, we don't want any.
I need you to understand something. Understand what I'm saying, please. You are in Maryland.